All right, good evening, everyone. It is six thirty-five, six thirty-three. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Cowal.
Here.
Councilmember Highland is not present this evening. He shall be returning soon. I would expect him back for the next meeting. Also with us this evening, on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin, on my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. In the audience, Resident Del Sharn, Resident Neil Wish, Bob Luth, Kurt Mank, representing the Enterprise, Chief of Police John Pedersen, Officer Jankowski, and there she is. Lee Ortles and Greg Stang, welcome. And Lee and Greg are representing People's Service. Okay, we'll move forward then with the agenda, approving the agenda and any agenda additions. And there are some. I see under announcements, under G, we're looking at, is that a correction or is that just an insertion of a date and time?
Correct. On the initial copy, it incorrectly stated April twenty-seventh. That would be Friday, April twenty-sixth is the Thursday, so correction. To that meeting.
And then, under ordinances, resolutions, we're adding Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-eighteen, Resolution discontinuing the EDA lot acquisition program, and adding Resolution forty dash twenty-eighteen, Resolution amending the revolving loan fund maximum amount. Moving down to unfinished business, we're adding approve or deny entering into a purchase agreement with Streetcar Consulting LLC for conducting a housing study at a cost of seven, at a cost of four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty cents. Then moving on to new business, adding two items. Approve or deny awarding a thousand dollar forgivable loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program. And the last addition is adding on the, or adding the approval letter to Surface Transportation Board, Cynthia Brown requesting a comment period before transitioning ownership of the rail line to Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to approve the agenda with the additions that were mentioned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda itself then. Item A, approval of the March nineteenth, twenty-eighteen, City Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of the April twelfth, or April second, I'm sorry, twenty-eighteen, City Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval of the bills. Item D, approval of the Raceway Ambulance Service Agreement. Item E, authorized hiring of Kenneth Pershaw as seasonal mower. And then, item F, authorized hiring of William Roche as seasonal mower. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. No, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I can remove the April second Council Meeting Minutes.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to get those out and I'd like to ask for some clarification.
Okay.
So if I could hold on to those.
So we'll be crossing out item B then.
Correct.
All right, Cowal has a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Cowal moved for approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Batchor, second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Under addressing the council, is there anyone wishing to address the council this evening? I don't see anyone.
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
I just have something I'd like to bring to the council if I would.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm on the agenda or not.
No, we give, usually in this place, we give you five minutes to.
Okay. Well, I won't take five minutes.
Okay. Go ahead and state your name, please.
Neil Wish, citizen in Arlington, I'm an EMT. To Mayor Nagel, councilmembers, and Administrator Melvin. It is with deep regret that after serving on the ambulance for twenty years, I am resigning my position May first. Due to us relocating and my busy schedule, I feel I'm no longer productive enough to be taken call away I should be. So with your approval, I'd like to resign as of May first from the Arlington Ambulance.
Okay, and you have the statement ready?
I have somewhat of a letter my daughter typed up from a real clerk. But, yeah, that's the gist of it.
Well Neil, I appreciate your twenty years of service.
Yes, and it goes for all of us.
You're gonna be missed.
I'm gonna miss it too, but it's that family's gotta come first, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for all of your service that you've provided.
Thanks to you.
Ideally, the proper place to put this would be under new business, but I'm gonna call for a motion now to accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Neil Wish as EMT.
Almost that way, accept the resignation. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Cowal, to accept the resignation of Neil Wish as EMT for the Arlington Ambulance Service. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thanks again, Neil. All right, moving on to item six announcements.
First item that we have is the Senior Expo, which is on Tuesday, April seventeenth, from nine AM to two fifteen at the Arlington Community Center. Second item is the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Open Book Meeting on Thursday, April nineteenth, from three to eight at the Sibley County Courthouse located in Gaylord. Item C, the Third Annual Sibley County Community and Business Expo, Thursday, April nineteenth, the Arlington Community Center from four to seven. We are very fortunate to have none other than our own police department well represented. Cash will be doing a demonstration at that meeting as well, so. Come and see the new, the new member of our police department will be joining us soon. Fourth item is the Sibley County Municipalities Association Meeting, which is on Thursday, April nineteenth, at the Green Isle Fire Hall at the Community Room at six o'clock. Individuals attending will be provided with an update as to the status of the medical school in Gaylord. Item E, Household Hazardous Waste Collections. Those will be on Thursday, April nineteenth, from ten AM to four at the Sibley Highway Shop. Item F, the Sibley County Act on Alzheimer's Lunch will be, will have a guest speaker, Katie Roberg, a therapeutic recreational specialist. That will be on April twenty-sixth, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty here at the Arlington Community Center. Item G, Marketing Hometown America Kickoff Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-sixth, from seven to eight PM here at the Arlington Community Center. Individuals who would like to be involved in that session and future meetings can contact Amy Newsom at amyn@co.sibley.mn.us. On Saturday, May nineteenth, the Cancer Cruise will occur. It will start at Four Seasons Park at nine AM. There'll be a five K run and walk, a car show at Saint Paul's Lutheran Church from eleven to four, and then a cruise departing Arlington at four PM. On May twenty-fourth, from nine to four, will be the City of Arlington's Cleanup Day. That will be in partnership with the Tri-County Waste Tire Appliances and Electronics Collections, and that will be held at the Sibley County Fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. Any question on the announcements? If not, we'll move on to communications. March building report. Everyone, as I assume, we have received, have you ever seen the building report for March?
As you'll note, there are a few more significant buildings, items coming up, and those are a direct result of Northland drying, so. Otherwise, we've got a few, almost there. Otherwise, we've got a few. Maybe not in novice agenda, maybe it doesn't have that option. So I can hardly read it myself.
The largest one.
You know, if you go to the three dots right up on the top there, on the right, or there, now you gotta add addition button down there.
Down there, okay, there, that's what it's.
There we go.
So there you can see some of the more significant items. Again, our Northland drying, having some plumbing, at a valuation cost of one hundred and twenty-one thousand. Again, Northland drying doing a bathroom remodel for another sixty thousand. And then some individual permits that were pulled. One for window installation for about forty thousand. Looks like another solar system for the Sibley's schools at about thirty-four thousand. So. Are there any questions on building permits pulled in March?
March wastewater, you've had, you have been furnished with the water and wastewater report. If you have any questions, we have the experts here tonight to answer them.
One of the items I'll maybe point out as shown in our chart here is the. Is the daily wastewater pumped in gallons. And I know I've asked Lee this question, you know, it seems that we're down compared to where we've been in the past. And that can be attributed, correct me if I'm wrong here, Lee or Greg, but to the fact that we haven't had a lot of rain like we typically would in a spring.
What spring?
Yes, so there hasn't, there hasn't been as much water getting into the, or there, there hasn't been as much water leaking into the wastewater system, correct? So we'll see if those numbers stay low or if they jump up as we get more rain and things start happening.
Lee, what, on an ongoing basis, what, what do you, what does People's Service try and do to narrow that gap between the amount of wastewater that's dealt with and the amount of water that's pumped? It seems like there's a huge gap all the time. Maybe just for the people that haven't, or just maybe listening, what, you know, what types of things create that?
Um, there's cross connections, what they call INI, Infiltration. Some pumps, some people have some pumps hooked in, some older homes, a lot of them built in like the fifties and sixties, got drain tiles, they just, that's the way they were built, around the base of the house, they're hooked in. But it's something that's started looking at. I know that the city doing the last two, one infrastructure project, that some of the stuff that was looked at, where can the some pumps go so they're not discharging into the sanitary? And I know there's been some cross connections with storm drains that are looked into and stuff.
Okay.
And, you know, years ago, that's kind of the way it was done, but as time has gone on, communities have grown, this would be more of a challenge, you know. You know, the infrastructure is aging, you get cracks in the pipes and that. It's just something to keep working at to find out where the areas are and address that. Because basically, you're treating, you're just treating water instead of treating your waste.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Well, January and February looked bad. I mean, the best, the best that it's looked for the last year or whatever, and it's really closing the gap, so. June.
Basically.
Do they know about it? They know about it, or?
Now there's a quality general last two years, and the some pumps for running and anything that was draining in.
Should I wait until after the report? Have they gotta come forward for that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you do that?
Not at the cost of my, it's bad stuff now, but it's there, it can be done. That's the most I've seen in under two hundred dollars in a day. And then go back looking at years, it's never been that low. So, so with that said, there's something that happened.
Okay, we'll do it right away when they come up.
The last two road projects, working with the fairgrounds and stuff. Because that was kind of my major concern.
All right, moving on, item C, if I could have Lee and Greg come forward. I have a certificate of commendation that's awarded to the Arlington Wastewater Treatment Plant and staff, and we'd like to present that at this time. I don't know where, where you want, Pat, where can you get a good picture?
Why don't you guys come on up here and?
All right, and I'll just read it here. Certificate of Commendation awarded to Arlington Wastewater Treatment and its wastewater treatment facility staff recognizing the exemplary effort in the year 2017 to comply with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, NPDES slash MSDS wastewater permit program. Your efforts help protect and preserve the waters of Minnesota. And it's signed by John Link, sign, MCPA Commissioner, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. So, you know, we are.
You guys should stand over here, maybe.
Over here?
So you're not in the.
Oh, yeah.
No writing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to get a couple. If you could pull that chair in or put it somewhere or maybe over this way.
A little bit. Perfect.
Definitely not, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Get a frame for it.
And as long as you're up and about, you can do your annual report. Is that microphone on, Tom?
No.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
You could probably push that button.
Green light's on?
Then we're good. Is that?
I don't think so.
It's not on.
I think you push it once, it'll get brighter.
Get brighter.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, welcome, welcome, my fellows. And congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do a quick explanation of that certificate of commendation, what it is. All the facilities, the permitted facilities in the state are eligible for them. And essentially, what you have to do is, you can't miss any of the samples, you know, and I don't even know what the number is per week that have to get done here, but there's quite a few samples that have to get done. And you can't be over the limits on any of the samples, which is another tough one to go with. Then, you have to have all your reports in on time by the twenty-first of the month. All, and.
No upsets?
Yeah, no upsets. You can't have any bypasses, anything like that. You have to run kind of flawless for the whole year, so it's, they're not a gimme by no means, you know. They have to be earned. Thank you guys for giving us the facility that we can meet these parameters with. You know, it takes an investment from the city itself to, for us to operate it. And we had a good year, and that's an issue for many, many of these in a row. It's always our goal, so. But as you know, I'm Greg Stang, I'm Region Manager with People's Service. And that's Lee, the operator, local operator here. Basically, I'm gonna be reporting to you guys tonight, um, on the staffing wise. As you guys probably know, Louis is no longer with People's Service. And just today, we had our new guy start full-time permanent. He's, he was, he's been working for People's Service for probably three years now, and he now transferred from the blowers who are over here. He was from, he worked over here originally, he was out Wester Prairie. Then he got full-time permanent down there, and then he wanted to stay within the company to get closer home, so this was perfect for him, so. He, um, Lee Forsier is his name. So I learned to make it confusing for everyone, so I heard it right.
Or maybe easier. Where's Lee?
Exactly, wait, Lee. So, yeah, he started full-time permanent today, and I think Lee will be, they will likely be taking him to the city staff meeting tomorrow.
We're meeting tomorrow.
To meet everybody, so.
We can pick on.
So yeah, that's, they only change as far as staff-wise goals, and I'll let Becca go through, but he all has to go through.
So if you look up on the screen, I had an opportunity this spring to give a presentation, it was in the first part of February, at the Minnesota Rural Water Association, their annual convention up in St. Cloud. It's the biggest water convention in the state by far. And I got to do a PowerPoint presentation about the city of Arlington and what we've done at the wastewater plant up there. And this all started from some comments that were made at one of your council meetings, and this goes all the way back to 2016, and it kind of walk you what we threw, what we went through. What question was is, there is a lot of money spent remodeling the wastewater plant. You know, we've all doubled, doubled it in capacity and, and, um, and with that, it didn't, what, I'm trying to answer over. Okay, I just got a little nervous here. Okay, the, when the plant was remodeled, it, you know, it was put in, built to run thirty years from now. And part of the, the question that was asked is, why are we not saving any money on this? Why is it costing so much to run this plant? So what we ended up doing is a free service through the, what they call MINTAP. It's a, it's a program out of the University of Minnesota, Minnesota Technical Assistance Program is what it is. It's a federally funded program. It's used through the state of Minnesota to help find areas where people can save energy, to reduce energy. And I was sitting in one of their presentations, and they made a comment that thirteen percent of all the electricity produced in Minnesota is used by power wastewater facilities. That's a lot of, lot of electricity. And when I started back here in 2016, something wasn't right. And we kind of knew it, and we're talking to them, we got going in the right direction of what we were doing. So, so this is a picture of the current plant, what it is. It's a fine bubble aeration plant. If you go up where the driveway comes in on the top left corner, the first building, that's a headworks building, and from there, it goes into them four basins. That's the old part of the plant. And then from the south of there, there's three basins, and that was all added new when the plant was redone. Well, when we started there, when I started there, every one of them basins were in use. And, and after we were looking into it, I got a better picture of the next picture of the plant. You can kind of see a little more, a little closer of it. So, um, we tried to figure out why was the plant built so big? Like I said, these plants are built thirty, to be running thirty years from now, and this plant was running as it was, if it was thirty years from now. The blowers were way oversized, there's three blowers that were put in, and we could only use one blower, and it was running at eighty-five percent. And when they put the monitoring equipment in, this is all controlled off of a SCADA computer, and it reads dissolved oxygen, and you need that for the environment for the bacteria to live. And if you're over at two, basically by textbook, you're wasting electricity. Well, it comes to a point where you're putting so much oxygen in it, it's just like the air. It's saturated with oxygen. Our wastewater was saturated with oxygen, it was at eight point three to nine, whatever it was. Every basin throughout the whole facility is like this, and it's running on the one blower that's running at eighty-five percent. So, and then when they came and took a look at this, and basically, the city of Arlington has more solids under aeration than towns of the city of Hutch, the city of Little Falls, the city of Rogers. It's just so much wastefulness of it. So we tried to look into what we could do to correct this, and, and we can flip to the next slide if we want. So we went to transition from five aeration basins down to three. And we know the plant is, is running well underneath its design flow. And we took, they, they took out these blowers and put in these big blowers, and then in 2010, 11, they redid the slug storage tanks and they put new blowers in there. Well, they were the same size as the blowers that were taken out. So we decided, and they're, they're kind of piped in together with a manifold. So we took down that smaller blower, and we got rid of the four aeration basins at the beginning, and we're only running the bottom three aeration basins with that. And then we were able to turn that blower down to half the speed. We're thirty, right now it's running at thirty-six percent. And with that, in electrical costs, we've been able to save twenty thousand dollars a year in electrical costs. That's huge. We, your electrical costs out there are fifty-five thousand a year, and we dropped it by that much. And I was asked to do this presentation, they've done this with a few other plants through Minnesota, and there seems to be a common theme when these plants are built, they're just built so, so big, you know. And, and that's what, you know, just trying to get it to run the way it should, you know. So we go on to the next slide. So the results of the changes, the plant was running, you know, at a DO at a saturation point. We are trying to monitor it at a four. And if we get, and processes, we're using the first tank as an anaerobic selector tank. That's the first step you need for biological phosphorus removal. Then it's going all the way down to the bottom to them three tanks. One is being aeration, and the other one is being anoxic zone where it's being starved for oxygen, and the other is a rea, re-aeration zone. And that's kind of the process you need for biological removal of phosphorus. The INI that we have does not help that, but it's working. And with that, we've been, last year, we saved four thousand dollars, we've saved in chemical treatment. So, and Greg was an operator in the plant that does this, I was, in Lester Prairie, Richmond. We don't go through chemical, you know, in Lester Prairie, I can make three thousand gallons last, I mean, two thousand gallons last three years. We just don't use it unless we do, something happens or we dump on ourselves from something, but it, yeah. So, and we're gonna continue on with it. The only issue we found that if the dissolved oxygen gets under two, we have an ammonia limit, then the ammonia starts to rise up, and we just gotta turn it back up. So we met an area, and some of that, we go on to the next slide. So on some of the answer to that is, we still, even though we've taken fifty percent of the plant out of, from being in operation, it's still running at one-third of its design flow, and we could go to two aeration units, I mean, two aeration basins, and that would probably get rid of the ammonia issue that we have when we do that. And they also talked about that. And they also talked about that with putting in a different blower, a smaller blower than what we have and go down to a smaller footprint, it would save another three thousand dollars a year. It probably costs eight thousand dollars to put that blower in. But we don't know if we can do that or not, especially with Northland drying, you know, if something changes and we need that plant, you know. And then we have the room, the capacity to do that. And, and that's great because the plant is built for that, you know, but if you're not, you don't have it, why use it, you know, and that's what this is about. So, maybe we can go on to the next slide. So we've done it two years in a row now, since we started this, we've saved about twenty thousand dollars each year. And so far this last year, we saved four thousand dollars in fare and hopefully we can do more, we can do better. Um, we haven't filled the tanks since last October and they still got over half a tank, so we are going in the right direction with it, so. And like I said, if we can further, we can take this on farther, but it's where, where do we wanna go, you know, right now, twenty-four thousand a year. That, you know, and back then, it, it, when the question was asked, it was, it was questioned about having to raise those sewer rates because of, of expenses and stuff, well, this is the difference from not doing that, you know, so. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that was the presentation they gave at Rural Water, so.
That's awesome.
Cool.
It's kind of neat.
Well, I feel.
There's a lot of operators from the state that see that.
You had mentioned Northland drying, uh, I'm assuming that there's more than adequate capacity there for, for what they're gonna be adding to the city?
We're hoping, it depends on what, when they, when they first approached, these, their numbers were really high from what they were gonna say, it would have been real challenge for that. And now they say they've ch- gonna change operations and how they're gonna do it, they're gonna recycle, but we're still gonna be getting, you know, stuff from the floor, they're gonna be washing and that's, we're gonna be monitoring that. To see what, what is gonna come out of there.
A lot of times with industries like that, sometimes it's one cleaning agent that they use or something that, if they discharge too much of it down in the plant, it can wipe all your bugs, it can, you know, that's why we hesitate something, oh yeah, we can handle anything they'll give us. That's really not true because if it's, and most of them companies are well aware of what should and should not go down the drain and.
Sure.
But that, that is most of times what it is, it's cleaning agent or, you know, it's milkman, if actually they dump a big tank away down or something, you know, that'll just wipe you out and that kind of stuff, but it's uh.
Okay.
You're working with them and letting them know what products maybe would be best, best practices or?
Well, we just wanna, we wanna know what they're gonna be giving us, this is the biggest step.
Yeah, it hasn't gotten to that point yet, they still haven't done startup, they keep saying they're going to and then they put it off and then, you know what I mean, that's happened multiple times.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, and that's one of the things I have on my goals is I wanna have a, a very good working relationship with them. If, if we're getting dumped on, the last thing I wanna do is come down there and say, you gotta do this, no, we need to talk about it and work through it and
Right.
Yeah.
what's fair and that, you know, and, yeah, so that, that's part of my goals and to be able to have a good working relationship with them, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
Well, I was just gonna go through last year's.
Please do, please do, I don't wanna cut you short.
So, um, one of the things we did last year, lift station, we put, we're gonna continue with doing an annual maintenance program. Kind of got left off a little bit on it, we do a come in and have a thorough, very thorough inspection of the lift stations. We had to have a meeting and we had repairs on all of them, it kind of resulted in some money on it and I think we're ahead of that now, so as long as we keep up with that, I wanna be able to do that. We pay for that inspection in-house, I'll bring up some repairs need to be done, you know, we might have to approach the council about something. And also, I wanna go every other year, cleaning out the lift stations, having them vacuumed out. We had damage to one of the pumps because something was in there and rock, piece of metal down. The roots and then, I mean, I, I don't know when the last time they were cleaned out and then we wanna continue with that 'cause if I spend, you know, five hundred dollars a lift station to clean them out and then I'm turning around, spend ten thousand dollars to fix a pump or, you know, yeah, because it wasn't cleaned out, you know, yeah, we'd try to be for it, you know.
I would agree.
Yep, um, well, head protection plan, we uh, the other year is, we made the wellhead protection manager and we have got done through and approved of a ten-year extension to that plan. So through the Minnesota Department of Health, we've been working, Pat and I have been working with a gal from Minnesota Rural Water and she can walk us through it and help us with it and so. One of the, the things that has come out of this is, is a TSE building, is that used to be a cream reed and there's supposed to be an old well there.
I've heard.
Anybody knows where that well is. We, that is in our, our, our area of uh, concern, you know, from where the water comes from and all that. Even though our wells are so deep here, probably ain't gonna be impacted anyway, but they're concerned about any wells that are abandoned that are over four inch in diameter, so, um.
How can you go about finding that, I mean if?
I, I've, I've talked to Guy, um, they're not sure where it is, if we could just find what area the building it was in, they, they, they say that it, it, the pump was cut, dropped in and now they kind of say it was filled with sand and then they cemented over it with the floor. Well, that's sealed, you know, and we just gotta, gotta find that out and figure that out. And the thing about it is in April, they have funding for this, they got free money to have this well sealed, they, April and September.
You can get ten thousand dollars.
And we need up to ten thousand dollars, the applications due by the end of the month to get the money. So if we can find this.
Figure out where it is.
To figure out where it is real quick here and we can have it done for nothing, you know, so. So that's, that's one of our things we're gonna be doing. Um, fairground improvements from last year, we did smoke testing out there, we found no issues. We know what the issues are, there's the rain caps coming off of the buildings that were in the cattle wash stations and uh, the dump site. Uh, two, two of them have been fixed, the one cap was not fixed, had a trailer parked over it and it's still there, um, we'll get that addressed right away this spring. We just gotta, we just put a screw-on cap on it instead of plug over the top, just slip on.
Okay.
And, and that goes back into the INI thing that, that's, that's showing up because every, be- before, uh, rain, roof, all these big roofs out there, re- snow and that would come off that roof, melt, that was coming right in, right into the sanitary. And you're, you're seeing the results of that now, because especially in the winter time, that's showing, that ball, ball going away. So, um, and then, uh, we had a water meter structure installed in the fairgrounds and the Legion Hall has a water meter in it, so they're paying for water and sewer, they never were. And I think you, that, you're gonna see a lot of water that you didn't know was going, coming out of that, so, water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And you weren't collecting before as revenue, so that's good. Um, like I said, we've been working with Northland drying, um, we worked with the pilot mixing thing, um, every, they're up and running, they were last summer with the meter and they did the water main looping out there, that was big for the city to have that done. And went underneath the river, brought that in, that was all one dead end and it goes off of Fourth Avenue to Brooks, all the way through that. Um, then buildings out there, the, and then comes back down by Haggen Miller and goes to the north, that was all one big dead end. So now that's looped and, uh, plenty of water.
How much, how much capacity did, do you think that changed? I mean, did it double the capacity or more than double or as far as gallons?
Yeah, I, it was a six inch and I went to a ten inch coming out there, so. It, it really is gonna help out with the fire rating and stuff, you know, so.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, that way you, more industry can come out there, they're gonna have water, so, and um, yep, working with Northland drying, they are, they are hooked up. They ran a two-inch line over by the water treatment plant into the um, water system there for theirs and they also have to put in a lift station in the backside that's gonna discharge to the back. And that's what we're gonna be monitoring once they get started, to see what's actually coming out of there and if we're, if it's a big load or not, so. And um, yep, and then we've talked about that well, you know, Seneca used well three. That well, they're no, no longer gonna use that, what would it take if the, the city would be interested in acquiring a well?
So the well is the city's property or is it, was it Seneca?
It's on the city property, it's in the city park.
On the city property.
And it was kind of a conjoined agreement when that was put in, so, but then, that's all future, I'm gonna, so.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have a water supply plan that got completed last year and we're in the process of submitting. That'll be submitted to the state of Minnesota, the DNR, they will review it, they will send it back with any corrections that they seem necessary. And then it'll be resubmitted and then it'll come back and then it'll be here for council's final approval and that'll be good for another ten years. So, and um, let's see, we replaced the wagons and hoses on the, the, the holler we use for hauling the sludge. Uh, the jetter, we have that replaced now, that was approved last year. Actually have training on it tomorrow, so, ten o'clock, we're supposed to be here and we're gonna do some training on it and.
Mm-hmm.
Get everybody, we got the new, new guy here hired, I wanted to wait up for him, so they'll be using it, so. And if I can, I wanna help some of the city guys, it's theirs too, they can use it on storm sewers or whatever they want, so.
Are they coming out for the training as well?
Hopefully, so, it'll be good for them, because in, it's the city property, there's no reason why they can't, they use it even though it's propped up, so. So then we had eight water main breaks last year, that's down, we had twelve the year before, so it's, that's good, this is better. You know, and part of this infrastructure improvement projects that the city's been doing is really showing that, you know, getting some rid of some of that, some of that. And we replaced three hydrants throughout the city and we, and we took, when they'd redid this, we had a, some hydrants that were only a couple of years old. So why not repurpose them, so we took, read a list of the worst ones we got and then we replaced them with those, so. So then my, kind of have some goals for two thousand eighteen, I wanna finish getting the water meters changed out this year. There's about fifty residential meters left and about twenty of the commercials, but that's getting into bigger meters and stuff like that. And we've been working on the commercial, we've done probably three or four of them already this year so far. So, um, infr- infrastructure improvements, we talked about the INI, wanna continue working on that, finding issues that are going on. I know the city has talked about some, doing in, um, improvements in two areas of town. And one is like on the, the Baker Street area down in there. I can, I know that we have a cross connection down there, they did smoke testing years ago and they smoked the sanitary and one of the storm lines drained out. And when Tony was here, he goes, there's a line in one of the cut sewer man holes for the storm sewer and it runs at an angle down, I go, I know where that's going. And um, and it is probably was, 'cause that, that, that area is a poor drainage area, that we've had issues down there. I know every time we get heavy rains and we, we're really struggling at the plant to keep up with it, especially if it comes down really fast. So we'll just continue to work on stuff like that and so, I wanna work with Pat and uh, take him out, kinda teach him more, I love the water and the sewer and take him for a couple of field trips and show him what possible things are, so.
I'll be certified at the end, right?
Cause you need to wake off back to take over.
It'll be a test. Um, one thing we wanna go through is through our maintenance program, we wanna kind of prioritize more of our annual maintenance, you know. I wanna kind of move them up so that they're being done earlier in the year, it seems like stuff's getting pushed back to fall and all of a sudden you're busy and it ain't getting done or you, you're, you know, it's cold out, you could have been doing it when it was nice. So we wanna take a look at some of our maintenance and kind of make it work better for us. Um, I, I talked about the wellhead protection plan, yep, we're gonna try to find that, that well and, and then we have requirements and doing some public education, we're, we already put some s- uh, thing on the link on the city website that you can click on and we, and it takes you right to the Department of Health Wellhead Protection, so, kinda takes us out. So, and that's all part of it, the requirements and doing it. Um, and then we have uh, vital cubes in town, they, they, they're not being used. Um, one was in disrepair when I got here and the other one's a big building that's being heated. Um, there's an impeller inside a fan, big aluminum blower shroud and it di- disintegrated a couple of years ago. And it hasn't been used since, they're, they're put in as an air stripper that, you're taking the sewage from Green Isle, bringing it over here. If that starts to get septic, that can take that smell out of the air. But they're constantly failing and breaking the one and all we did was get sewer complaints over there. It's over by the uh, right off of Highway five between Scott and Scott Equipment and the Seneca. Right when you pull near the white building. And it's been, since it's been off, we've had no complaints. So it smells a little more at the sewer plant, who cares, everyone's gotta know it anyway, but.
If you're okay with it, we're okay.
You know what I mean? But the thing about it is, is, is there's water in there, there's, there's parts with water in there and you're paying to heat that building. And if, if it's not needed, I think we should look at getting rid of it and not pay to heat it. And as far as it could be cold storage for the city, for maintenance or something, or somebody to put stuff in and utilize it for equipment that you're never gonna use, so. And that's about it.
Yeah.
I would like to thank you for the pride you put into your job and how much you do for the city, uh, especially in money-saving things that you've done just this year, appreciate that.
I'll suck at that.
That's kind of fun, I mean, this, this was asked and, and it, it just played out that way, it, it was brought up like a month and then, or three weeks later, I was sitting in the class, listening to the guy talk and I go, that's what we need. And he said, he said in there, he said that they are funded for, through the, for the U of M, for twelve projects through the state, they use them all. And, and at that point, there was only three that were there and I couldn't get signed up quick enough for it because it was free.
I tried for a different city and it's, they want ten thousand dollars to do this exact same study now, so. That city don't have quite that money budgeted for it, so. But yeah, you guys got in at the right time and we took advantage of it and it's paying dividends now, so.
Very nice dividends.
Yeah. It's unfortunate when they.
With more to come, you know.
You know, I understand why they designed the plants the way they do, you know, for growth and everything, 'cause you don't wanna plan for today, you wanna plan for tomorrow. You don't build for tomorrow, but it's uh, the manuals never tell you how to operate it for today's flow, you know, it's all for when it's under full flow, you know, it's not just this facility, when I was at Richmond, the same thing, last year was the same thing. You know, so you gotta kind of improvise and do the best you can and. Need growth.
All right, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it for the time.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Lee, if you want, we can put that certificate up on the backboard for you, if you wanna. Sure, yep. So we're reminded of what great work you do.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, moving to ordinance and resolutions, resolution thirty-six dash twenty eighteen.
Well, police department.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped something. No offense, Chief Peterson. All right. It's more fun than ordinance is anyhow, so.
You almost thought you got out of that, didn't you?
Must be my bifocals, sorry.
Well, I'll just jump into it, really.
Yeah, jump in.
So just a update, I guess, about the departments, um, thank you guys again for allowing us to get the new watch guard system for the squad, squad car. We ended up with um, cops on patrol up in Hutchinson getting us all set up. And I was able to get the computer system set up in the office, Kirby got the antenna put up and we are functional and it's running exactly the way I wanted it to. Um, in addition to that, it's set up in the Impala as well. So if some of you have seen the Impala running around, while it was up there, we gave it a little update for look too, so now it kind of matches the Explorer and we look like the real police department, I think. Thank you.
Looks good.
Um, along with that, we kind of moved around some things at the office and we're getting some computers set up on each of the patrol officer's desks. Um, in anticipation of having the new officer, we each have our own little workspace. Uh, hiring process committee met and we have reconvened and restructured and we're going to end up um, reposting for a new hire position. So we're starting that process effective uh, this weekend, so I think we already have two applications.
Nice.
So, um, that's, yeah, very positive. Uh, in addition to the police committee meeting, I just throw it out here and um, Mr. Highland was one to have mentioned it a couple of meetings ago or council meetings before, Was the mention of some part-time stuff and maybe bringing in some part-time officers. So with the committee discussion that we had, um, it was something that you guys will be hearing at request in the future. Uh, to see if we could possibly get three part-timers in place, so that if we are down an officer, we have the ability to fill those positions back to the.
Do you know the background why we eliminated?
There was some discussion at the committee meeting that we had, and our hopes is to, um, restructure the part-time policy. And, um, maintain some tighter supervision over, is what I'm gonna strive for, I guess.
Yeah, the reports weren't getting done, it, it is prob- my understanding, that was the primary. And then so so- somebody else would have to do it and s- since they weren't there, they didn't know exactly what took place.
Sure.
It was hard to do.
And I can see that's where one of the complications would be, when we need to get somebody that may is in custody, a report needs to be completed, so we'll have to manage that a lot better. So, um, I guess along with that, I know behind you, you've got the statistics, I, I hate to bore everybody with those, I think they speak for themselves. Um, as far as other things that are coming up, um, the Sibley County Expo you had mentioned is on Thursday. Myself and Cash will be doing a, two demos, so come out and see that if you want to. Chiefs Convention is starting on Sunday, uh, so I'll be at that for the Sunday to the middle of the week, that's up in Duluth. Um, Sarah's gonna be graciously filling in for me and taking all calls that come in, twenty-four hours a day.
Nice, Sarah, way to go.
We'll start calling.
Start ripping her out, Tom.
So I'm really looking forward to that convention, I think there's a lot of, uh, really informative and, uh, good, uh, groups that are meeting and some. A lot of good things that'll come from it, I think. So along with that, we've got a planning committee meeting that's gonna be May third, um, I believe it's with Amy Newsom. We're gonna be discussing some of the outdoor storage, along with the nuisance and the code. Issues that are kind of holding us up right now with some of the backyard, along with the mud and the soft alleys and nobody can get things moving around. And then we're gonna come and chat with you at some point in time too, Ross, about trying to get some of that wording straightened out. And then we'll come back to the council with, uh, maybe an update of some suggestions that are gonna come from that. So again, that's May third meeting, um, we are ready for the Cancer Cruise, uh, the five K, we've got some people set up to help with that. And the, uh, Classic Car Show should be a good turnout, we've got some folks ready to help with getting them parading out of town as well. Uh, one other thing, just to touch base, we've had some meetings with the, uh, radio committee, we'll call it. And there's been some progress being made towards, um, some solutions in the school that are probably gonna help out with the school reception issues. And then there's further discussion with the county commissioners and some other groups that Pat and I've been working on, trying to move forward with that radio communication issue that we have in, in town as well. So, I believe that's all I got.
All right.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're anxious for the snow to leave.
All right, now we will move on to ordinances and resolutions, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right on.
Don't wanna make the same mistake twice. Ordinance thirty, being a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for paving of the fire hall parking lot.
Um, I'll maybe turn this over to Adam, Adam brought this to my attention.
Sure, yeah, um, I guess there was twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted last year for capital outlay for the, to pave the parking lot by the fire department. Um, and that was based off of what John was given as a bid last year, that's why the twenty-five thousand was in there. Um, the bids came in substantially less than that, so it's almost half as much as what it was originally supposed to be, so. So they'd like to get that done, be a lot safer and, uh, they, what's that?
By the alley or in the alley?
Uh, yeah, well, in between, yeah, for the flagpole, in between.
In between, Bachelor Electric, or what used to be in the fire hall.
Yeah, and that would, uh.
To the east.
Yeah, that would get the red rock out of there, which they have to put, you know, every couple of years, they're putting fifteen hundred dollars worth of red rock in, so. It would be a cost savings over, overtime.
So one quote came in from William Mueller for sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-four. And then the second one came in from OMG Midwest for thirteen thousand thirty-six fifty cents.
And then that will be, I imagine the black topping is so it can be used as a parking lot all the time or used more?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion, uh, someone wish to introduce resolution thirty-six twenty eighteen?
I'll introduce resolution thirty-six dash twenty eighteen, approving a bid and awarding the contract for paving of the fire department parking lot to OMG Midwest for thirteen thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second.
Resolution thirty-six dash twenty eighteen was introduced by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for paving of the fire hall parking lot. OMG Midwest, doing businesses charred in the lowest, uh, area, thirteen thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
All in favor, four votes in favor, one absent, none against, the resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty eighteen, resolution approving conditional use permit for used passenger automobile sales at twenty-three two twenty-eight, four hundred and first avenue.
As included in your packet, there was a, uh, report, uh, from Cynthia. In the process of looking at the situation, the recommendation is to, uh, go ahead and to approve.
At the meeting, we didn't have anyone opposed to, um, the resolution or opposed to the, um, conditional use permit. Uh, with the conditions that were in the packet, so. With that, I'll introduce resolution thirty-seven twenty eighteen for, uh, approving conditional use permit for, uh, used passenger automobile sales, twenty-three two two eight, four oh first avenue.
I'll second.
Resolution dash thirty-seven, or thirty-seven, resolution thirty-seven dash twenty eighteen was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Cowell. That is a resolution approving the conditional use permit for used passenger automobile sales at twenty-three two two eight, four hundred and first avenue. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, one absent, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty-eight dash twenty eighteen, accepting donation and designating its use.
The, the city received a five hundred dollar check from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. This was to, uh, help pay for the marketing hometown America program. So, uh, the city is one, the EDA is another, uh, and Arlington Chamber, and I also believe Arlington Industries. Uh, all agreed to pay a portion of those costs, so, uh, just looking for your approval to accept that donation, which will then be forwarded to Amy Newsom to pay for the program.
I'll move that, uh, we accept resolution thirty-eight twenty eighteen, accepting a donation and designating its use.
Second.
Councilmember Yashewski introduced resolution thirty-eight dash twenty eighteen, and it was seconded by Councilmember Cowell, and that is a resolution accepting a donation, uh, from the Arlington Area Chamber of Commerce. To be used for marketing hometown America program. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, resolution is adopted. Is this services agreement with the University of Minnesota has something to do with, that was in the packet also, I think it was right behind the resolution for?
That's item thirteen.
That's item thirteen, all right. Thank you. Okay, next is resolution, uh, thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen, resolution discontinuing the EDA lot acquisition program.
You should have in front of you a copy of the resolution, uh, Amy Newsom, uh, while working with the EDA, has come across some old language. Indicating that at one time there was a lot acquisition program. What she's seeking to do is simply to have you approve this resolution, uh, indicating that that program is no longer active. It has not been active for a few years, but it has never been acted on to, uh, recognize that.
Dissolve it, okay. Okay?
I'll introduce resolution thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen, resolution discontinuing the EDA lot acquisition program.
I'll second it.
Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, and that is a resolution to, uh, discontinue the EDA lot acquisition program. It was seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, and, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, one absent, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution forty dash twenty eighteen, a resolution amending the revolving loan fund maximum, maximum loan amount.
It's my understanding from talking with, uh, Amy Newsom, EDA Director, that there have been some questions as to what the maximum amount would be from the revolving loan fund. So by way of, uh, having this resolution approved, she would like to, uh, allow loans to be made ranging from fifteen thousand up to forty thousand.
So when we were reviewing this, there was like con- conflicting amounts, so we just wanted to, to get the numbers straight, so it's straight across the board. I'll introduce resolution, uh, forty twenty eighteen, um, resolution amending the revolving loan fund maximum loan amount.
I'll second it.
Resolution forty dash twenty eighteen, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Hattleston, and it is a resolution amending the revolving loan fund maximum loan amount. To, again, fif- uh, that, that loan amount then be between fifteen thousand and forty thousand.
Um, no, that, there's a correction there, up to forty thousand dollars.
Up to.
It's the, it's the maximum loan amount, it's not a range.
Okay, maximum loan amount then would be forty thousand.
Correct.
All right, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, resolution is adopted. We'll move to item thirteen, approve or deny entering into agreement at the University, University of Minnesota for guidance and support and implementation of making it home program.
This has also been referred to as the, uh, marketing hometown America, or marketing hometown America program. Which, uh, basically includes working with staff from the University of Minnesota Extension. They'll work with several groups to identify what are unique characteristics about Arlington and how to better promote that outside of Arlington. So, uh, again, a portion of this is being paid by several different entities, including the city, the chamber, uh.
Arlington Industries.
Arlington Industries.
We talked a little bit about this on Thursday night at our, um, strategic planning session that we had with, uh, some residents that showed up. And, um, a comment that struck home with me or whatever is that, yeah, with what the University of Minnesota is doing and, um, uh, you know, having, um. What do you wanna call it, uh, a face or a, a logo or, or that sort of thing is gonna really help with our strategic planning that we're doing right now too, so. I just wanted to throw that in there. I'll make a motion to approve entering into agreement with the University of Minnesota, um, for guidance and support and implementations of making it home program.
I'll suck at that.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Hattleston to approve the, uh, entry into the agreement of the University of Minnesota for the implementation of, uh, making it home. Also known as marketing hometown America program. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried. Item fourteen, approve or deny authorizing administration to recruit and hire a thirty-two hour a week administrative assistant to assist with the increasing workload in administration.
If you would please take one and hand it down.
So this has been an ongoing discussion, uh, I know we had talked briefly about it at the last, uh, council meeting. Unfortunately, I, I didn't have enough time to, to do a little more homework, and that's what, uh. What I have come here tonight with, I've reached out, uh, through the League of Municipal Cities. There's a great tool out there that you can basically go out there and look at, uh, different organizations. Uh, basically, I did a overview, I looked at the organi- city governments for a population of two to three thousand in the, uh, central area. Came up with, uh, a few that were comparable, Howard Lake, Watertown, Montrose, Gaylord, Moose Lake, Wells, Winstead and Winthrop. Most of these city governments ranged, uh, from three, actually three was the typical number of, uh, staff within administration up to Winstead. Which had, uh, four and a half, uh, s- staff. One of the challenges, and today was a prime example of, uh, a challenge where, uh, it came in Monday morning and, uh, all kinds of things popped up. There were a few additions to the agenda that, uh, I didn't have prior, but came up and, uh, were added today. Um, so I didn't get all the, all the work done that I had hoped to, uh, but the benefit in terms of talking with my other staff. Uh, Lisa, uh, Annie and Vicky, the benefit of administration having one more person to help out with some of the work would be, uh, a significant improvement. And I think would allow me as the city administrator to be more proactive, less reactive. Um, right now, and I've been very fortunate, I haven't had a lot of sick time, I've been on probation, um, so, uh, sick time and time off has been very minimal. However, I have felt, uh, at times that if I were sick for a day, it would really throw things off to the point where, you know. Stuff that I'm working on with you guys, stuff that I'm working on with the departments, just wouldn't be done in time for the meeting, which was tomorrow, so. In that perspective, I would love to be more proactive, I'd love to be able to gather input more from, from employees and staff and do more research. Uh, right now, that schedule just doesn't allow me time to do that. Uh, I haven't been attending training, um, I've had to cancel some meetings just because I simply didn't have time. to attend, so I'm asking for your consideration to go ahead and to increase the amount of staff. Not significantly because kind of our long-range plan, which we've all talked about, is to have Vicki, who is currently fifty percent administration, fifty percent police, have her goal a hundred percent to the police department. She's currently working in the police department, and as such, I think that would be a good fit. At the same time, Vicki has been very gracious in saying that she would be more than happy to help us train somebody in for administration, so what we're asking for and what the Personnel Committee has supported is, is going with a thirty-two hours a week position for administration. The job description has been provided to you. Are there any questions on items that are put into that job description?
Where would the person be stationed?
The person would be stationed in administration. We've had some preliminary discussion about that. Right now, it would be back in that corner, which is not an ideal office. I would continue to have discussion with the council if there was a possibility of doing some minor renovation, only in the sense that we've got a lot of cabinets in that office area, which really isn't ideal for an office space. It's more of a kitchen cabinet type, type structure, but it would be doing the least amount necessary to maybe put a second desk in there so that a person could work just on the other side of where Annie's working right now, and try and put the desks on that side, move the copier. It, it's a small area. It's something that, you know, at some point in the future, there'll have to be more discussion about. But we will make that work because right now our biggest need is just having someone to help out with the workload and then I think you'll find that there'll be less errors. I mean, if, there'll be a lot of, a lot of things that'll come through well. Some key areas where I think I would be able to improve is in the communications with the council. I know that's something that I have not been doing simply because of time constraints. Also, I think a big part of what I should be doing is really focusing on budgets and, and working on a capital improvement plan, which quite honestly, I have found a lot of time to do as thoroughly as I would like, so.
An observation, our previous administrator mentioned that one of the reasons she was moving on was because of not having enough time for her family. And we've been hearing, please excuse me for not getting this done, I haven't had time to. We could say, well, just pull up the bootstraps and get it done. I don't know how realistic that is. I haven't followed you around to observe what all includes your day, but I know that you can have the best laid plans, but somebody comes in first thing in the morning and changes your whole direction of where you're, where you're going to go. So I, I'm considering that as part of my decision.
I think another thing we have to look at is with the police department. When we do finally get fully staffed, there are going to probably be more tickets or ICRs, and there's going to be an increase of workload at the police department, whether we have the chief do it, or we have Vicki do it. Vicki's going to need to be at the police department more often. And I guess I'd rather maybe have Vicki doing that work than have our chief doing that work, when he could be doing better work than work in the office.
And I think it's a good idea to have both of our leaders out in the community more.
I agree.
So people see them.
Good point.
I mean, we had a city, like you said, we had a city administrator leave because, you know, she didn't have much time for her family, and I don't know much how much longer we can keep kicking this can down the road either. There's a point pretty soon where, you know, we're going to have to take care of business. With the, and, and we can take Vicki and put her seventy-five percent in the PD, but now that shortens the city office twenty-five percent more. And John's already some, or Pat is already some degree short there, and now we're going to take more away.
The thirty-two hours, just on a legality standpoint, what is that, what's magic about thirty-two hours?
Uh, no benefits.
Okay.
At that point, so Personnel Committee was very receptive to let's try it out at thirty-two hours. Let's see how that goes, you know, see if you get the right individual in there, and just play it, go from there, so.
So there's also another, you know, twenty-five percent that Vicki will be on, on administration rather than police administration. So in the future, I mean, there's potential to shift depending on how this goes and make it a full-time position, but for now, I think we were comfortable recommending a, a part-time position. And I noticed in here, it talked about community center. Is that part of the job description there? Well, I see it, but I'm wondering, I want you to clarify that piece, please, for me.
I think the only expectation is that this position may be a backup to that, and that's in light of the fact that there will be a, a leave coming up at one, at, in October, and the hope is, and I'm not sure if this will work out or not, but the hope is that if we get this person on board and start training them, that we may be able to simply work with this person filling that spot. If not, we'll come to the, come to the Personnel Committee and ask for permission to hire a temporary replacement, but if we can save some money and run with the new person and then to other staff, that's a possibility at this time.
Is there a wage mentioned anywhere in this document?
I do not have a wage mentioned. I've taken a look at what some others pay for this type of position, and looking at where our current employees are, are rated. I am recommending, we start out with a fourteen dollar an hour position, which would come out to cost the city twenty-five thousand, just over twenty-five thousand.
So, as we redid the, the scales, we also redid the job descriptions as far as like different scales, different employees. Which one would they fall under? Would they fall under the same as Annie, or would they fall under? Which would this position fall under?
This position, in terms of being at the same, on the same scale as Annie, is that what you're asking?
I guess that's kind of what I'm asking. I'm also asking if it's a different, a different category.
Correct, it would be a different category in my mind.
So, you're proposing a new pay scale for this position then?
Correct. Starting at fourteen, and I haven't quite figured out what the top would be of that scale.
Where does the other one stand? I guess I didn't have that in front of me.
I don't know.
Start.
So the other, other staff in my department, we've got an individual at fourteen fifty-two currently, who'll be after the end of two thousand, after their step adjustment in July, will be up to fifteen eighty-four. So that's where I felt that the fourteen dollars was a reasonable amount for a new person coming on board.
And what is the starting on that one, or is that, that's completely new scales, so is that the starting?
That, what, the fourteen, no, that.
Fourteen fifty-two is the starting.
Oh, in that other position?
So the one that's at forty, fourteen fifty-two and will be?
Yep, the deputy clerk slash community center.
Okay.
Position.
So that is the fourteen, fourteen fifty-two is the first step, so to speak.
Yep, so this would be just a, a step lower than that.
Depending on experience, do they automatically start out at that dollar amount, or is it, could it be less, or could it be more, or?
I think it would automatically start at fourteen and depending upon experience.
I guess one time, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, or, or just say that if we're starting at fourteen and the other structures are there with each, you know, percentage that it goes up, that you follow, you know, those kind of steps, as in the others, and then just make it relative to the top pay of the other top pay, how much it's less to start?
Yep.
And with that, I would be okay with that pay.
I guess one concern I have is, I don't want to upset the people that are already here. I don't know if that's too close to maybe the, the starting pay. I mean, this is a more of a part-time than a full-time.
I guess the other thing, the, the thing that I think about is though, is looking after the future and not knowing what this is going to turn into or not, the kind of duties and the kind of character and the kind of skills that the person's going to have would probably warrant that, that price. And if we start on any lower, who are you going to get? I mean, we, we could get anybody for him, but is that going to cause more work for him?
No, I don't, I don't disagree at all, I'm just, I just don't want to upset anybody.
No, I get you.
I agree, if we get too low, we're not going to get the person we want or need.
Is this an assistant to every, to all the other staff?
This is basically an administrative assistant, but yes, this person will be working with everybody in the administration department.
And kind, kind of when somebody's on, automatic fill-in to that job, so need to know a little bit about everything or eventually?
Correct, yep.
So they will be cross-trained in pretty much everything up here, so I think that's.
That's a good idea.
Covering vacation times for the other ones, sick time.
Pay wage there, I think does need to be a little bit close. I mean, not saying that it should be, you know, right where the other ones are depending on the, um, looking at, looking at the job description and what they're going to have to be filling in for. They will have to have that skill set that the other ones have.
And you don't get, and you don't get benefits too, I mean, that's worse.
Right.
Yeah.
That's where somebody comes to play.
It is, it is challenging because you, you have existing employees who have been here for some time. You know, the challenge of bringing somebody in higher than them, at the same time, maybe the skill set is different. So I'm, I'm trying to carefully walk that path of finding what that right number is without upsetting the existing staff.
Chief?
Would you mind if I interject just one second?
No, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Um, I know when we were going to be talking about the part-time police officer position, we had talked about the pay scale being the same as the starting patrol officer, because the duties would be the same. The lesser cost is no benefits. So, because we didn't want to do exactly what you were talking about, it's upsetting, they're doing the same job in effect. So I just throw that off there.
Sure, thank you.
So I, again, the, you know, do have an employee making fourteen fifty-two who will be moved up to fifteen eighty-four in July.
July.
Alright.
So. And I looked for administrative assistants for some of our comparison cities, again with a population between two and three thousand, and the average between one, two, three, four, six, including ourselves, was about seventeen.
So we'll be well under.
Yes, yeah.
But they don't have to drive out a town, and they get to work with wonderful people.
They may even choose to volunteer.
We would love for them to be EMT certified.
We can keep dreaming like that.
We can keep dreaming.
You know, a concern is finding somebody with these qualifications that are going to want to work for, for that, and that's what I guess our response is, that's what our training is for, it's six months. Show us how valuable you are.
Yep, it'll, with any new position, it's always very critical that, you know, those first six months to work with the individual and to get to know strengths and weaknesses and provide them with training so that they have the tools and need to succeed.
I know we kind of brought it up at the end of the budget process, that there'd be money available, but where would we kind of come up with? How would this fit in?
We, we do have, through our capital improvement plan typically every year, we do have extra money. That comes out of there from projects that we don't get completed. So we would have money available there, otherwise, you know, typically what I have been doing lately with our CDs as they mature is just simply rolling those over. I don't know if we would have enough projects or extra costs that would justify, and maybe that's where with the eight hundred megahertz, maybe something like that, maybe one of those one hundred thousand dollar CDs. You know, maybe we cash one of those out. We've got them laddered so that they come in at, you know, various times throughout the year. My hope is that through, you know, through having this position, maybe we can be a little more proactive in terms of finding some grants and some different ways to pay for some things. I can't promise or tell you anything right offhand that I know for a fact we can achieve, but you know, some of the, I'm thinking about some of the things that happened in two thousand seventeen, we didn't get our, our our outstanding.
Accounts receivable.
Receivable. We didn't get that processed the way it should, so we have to wait a year, and then we'll put it on the property taxes for receiving that, but there are little things that, you know, having an extra person and being on top of things will I think benefit the city overall.
I think the added, added employees is going to definitely help. I mean, Liza was overhead. I mean, she ran things really nice and smooth and, and, and looked like, and made it look like a piece of cake, you know? But then when we had the interim, I mean, she had help from a lot of different people that we gave her to try and get the job done while she was here. And, you know, with the chief at the police station too, him needing that additional help and getting him out in the public more than, instead of sitting behind, behind his desk. I mean, it's, it's not just going to cross, you know, just the budget coming out of nowhere, it's, you know, part of that is going to be Vicki's salary is going to be lifted from the admin side, right, twenty-five percent of that. So we'll gain that, and the police will eat that. So, I mean, fifty percent is what we're trying to come up with. Fifty percent of twenty-five, so thirteen thousand or not even, how much is that?
Twelve five.
Twelve thousand, twelve five? That's close.
Yeah, this one employee's going to help the city office, like I said, and the police. We're killing two birds with one stone here. Yeah, this one employee's gonna help the city office, like I said, and the police, we're killing two birds with one stone here, or at least hopefully.
Okay, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve authorizing administration to recruit and hire a thirty-two hour a week administrative assistant to assist with the increasing workload in administration.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by councilmember Hattlestead, second by councilmember Batchor, to approve the, uh, authorizing administration to recruit and hire a thirty-two hour a week administrative assistant. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. Number fifteen then is the job description itself, is that what it was? Okay. Oh, okay, okay, so what did you just add now?
No, no.
Okay, item number fifteen then, uh, I'll leave you introduce that one.
Just wanna clarify, item fifteen is actually the administrative assistant job description for the police department, so, um, since you have approved, uh, going ahead with the administration, uh, department, uh, basically went through the, uh, the current job description, removed some of the reference to administration, and put it all as police department. In addition, items nineteen through twenty-four were added to the job description, uh, by Chief, uh, Hutterston. And so I'm looking for your approval to go ahead and approve that job description, knowing that, um, those duties will eventually go over to Vicky, Vicky is, like I said, been gracious enough to agree to help us to train in the thirty-two hour position, so.
I, so I'm confused on this, is this just her police administrative?
Correct.
Duties and no other duties?
That, that would be for her transition over to a hundred percent police department.
Are we doing that now, or are we waiting until somebody gets hired?
So, my thought was that we prove it now and have it done with, and then she's, Vicky and John have both agreed that she will continue to work with administration to train in that new individual.
So is.
Does the next one incorrect?
So is Vicky gonna go to the, um, police, is that the, for a hundred percent, or just seventy-five percent and twenty-five?
Long-term, she'll be a hundred percent, but right now she'll be working with administration to help us gear up and get a person on board.
So this is basically, what we're approving is a new job description, basically, right?
Yes, yeah.
And then whether it's filled or not, it's just a job description for now, and then when we get to that point.
It is.
It's a job description for.
Vicky's future job description.
Right, but it's not her, not, we're not transitioning her to a hundred percent this right now, she's gonna still be doing seventy-five, twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay.
Tell that position's filled.
And the twenty-five will be training the new administrative.
When that gets hired.
Over here.
Correct, yep, she'll be helping with that, this person will be doing minutes, which, you know, Vicky has some experience, some good experience with, and does a thorough job, so we hope that the individual that we picked.
Has Vicky been in, in, or knows all the jobs? Does she know how to do all the jobs that need to be done, that like this new trainee is supposed to?
Does she?
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Does she know Lisa's job, and does she know, um?
Annie's job.
Annie's job?
No, but she does, she knows the fifty percent of the administration job that she's doing, and so she'll be training this new person on that, but then we'll also have Lisa, Annie, and myself training her on those other aspects.
Gotcha.
So that the whole, she's familiar with everything that the administration department does. So this is, you know, technically, um, you know, should we approve the seventy-five, um, we're approving the, the seventy-five fifty with the idea that eventually she's going to be a hundred percent police department. When that happens is really dependent upon how comfortable this new person is and how easily that transition occurs.
Um, chief, have you had a chance to look over this job description?
Uh, not quite today, but yes, I've seen.
Okay, and, and your thoughts? Oh. No, I'm not specifically, but I was just curious if you had any concerns or questions regarding this?
I think.
Yeah, are you cool with all of it?
And Pat said he added nineteen through twenty-four.
Yeah.
So he was part of it.
So you're good with that?
And then something at the end?
Yes, and then some additional requirements at the very end.
So, this looks like, as I'm reading some of these, and maybe I'm, uh, number five, cooperates and support function for all other city departments? So is, and, and that talks about reports, resolutions, meeting minutes, et cetera? So is that, should that not be in there?
Correct, she'll, she'll be doing that in, in the interim, but that's not the long-term.
But, but this is what I thought this is, this is the long-term one hundred percent.
He said this one was for the hundred percent, when she's a hundred percent police department, this would be her job description.
I think some of the discussion that we did also had was that with the cross-training and the just the general overall knowledge that Vicky has, she's gonna be a resource at some point to help out, I guess.
Anywhere.
Right, I mean, you can't just take her away from the group, the administrative side of things. She's constantly gonna be asked questions and probably be able to fill in whenever needed to, um.
Cuz they're still gonna have questions for her.
Exactly, I mean, we need help, but we're gonna need help back and forth regardless, so that's kinda how I took that when I was reading that, is that she'd still be able to help out if needed.
And Michelle, I guess I was thinking too, cooperates and support function for the police department. She could be doing all those different things, but she's going to be acting primarily for the police department. So, but yeah, as John said, we'll be working together.
Right, cuz there's also the elections on here, with what she does for the elections, and what she does. So I mean, I guess, looking long-term, I mean, I can understand where she would be a resource for, because of who she is, but I mean, I guess when you create a job description, you, I, I don't know if you typically create it for the person who's there now, or the position itself, right? So I mean, if Vicky were at, were to have her leave, um, and somebody knew where to come in, they wouldn't have Vicky's twenty years of experience, sitting and listening to all the minute meetings and all that wealth that she has.
But, it's like what we had to do with Buck, when he passed away, there was nobody to train. Nobody knew what was going on, we just, that's gonna happen whenever you get a new person. You know, Pat just come on and, you know, and he got thrown the year-end budget tab ready.
Learn on the fly.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, and if, if.
Better with help, but.
And if the chief's willing to, to share, you know, down the road, even if you hire somebody new, if they have the ability to, to be able to, on, on a needed basis, type of meeting minutes or resolutions or.
It's just, it's an added asset.
Right, you know.
I think as a city employee, we have to consider the whole.
Right.
Yeah.
All the staff is being flexible enough to do those things.
There are a lot of habits that have to be worn.
Yep.
Well, I mean, this just looks to me like the seventy-five, twenty-five, is what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
Because even at the end of the day, even if we have a hundred percent down there, I would say, I mean, yeah, if something happens, sure, help out, but you would be, the chief would be relying on this person if it was a hundred percent administrative position, assistant position, relying on them a hundred percent of the time, right? So, to me, this seems like a twenty-five, seventy-five, or some kind of.
Yeah, on election day, she can't be working for the chief.
Yep.
I mean.
And I, I don't know if, if, John, if Vicky's had any discussion with you about the elections, is that?
She's doing it, I know she's made contact.
Yeah, and it's just been a matter of, that's what she's done in the past, so I presume it's a, a part of her duties as assigned.
And in talking.
But it, but right now she's fifty-fifty, and that should be part of her du- duties, right? But as she transit, I mean, from what I'm, what I'm, what I'm reading is that this is a hundred percent administrative police position. So in that case, I don't think that five, six, seven should be on there. For sure.
Five and six, probably seven has to do with criminal justice.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And, and number five.
And then, and sixteen, you know, when it talks lon- budget and long-range plan. I mean, not that, this totally describes on what I, I see her doing now, actually.
Well, a- and that's what we did, what we did is I basically took and removed parts of that that referred to administration. So that would be her doing what she's doing now and then some, in terms of working with the police department. With regards to the elections, I know that's something that Vicky has indicated to me that she enjoys doing, and she would like to do. But yeah, there may come a point where John says the workload is so much that, you know what, I need you even during elections, uh, so I.
So this is a, a, a job descrip- a description that may have to be modified when the time comes.
As.
But w- right now, it's something.
Well, I, I think this fits for her position right now, I guess is what I'm saying. If we were to move to seventy-five, twenty-five, this position fits, that, that fits. But if we were to move to, like, what you're proposing, a hundred percent administrative assistant for the police department, I don't think it fits.
So if we're moving to a hundred percent, is it the elections material that you don't believe should be in there, or is it?
The long-range plan, yeah, I mean, anything to do outside of the police department, anything that has to do with inside the police department or those, uh, jobs that, um, the chief would give her, or that come up through the police department would be a hundred percent police department, in my eyes. This, this, I mean, I, I like the job description, and I think it's very fitting for even, you know, seventy-five, twenty-five, but I don't think it's fitting for, if that's what we're discussing, a hundred percent police administration.
I mean, if you took out five, whatever, five, six, and sixteen, and just added a, may need to assist uh, other administration staff on a emergen- as needed basis, or emergency basis, or fill-in basis, or, you know, something like that.
And, and that would open it up to, like, if something did happen, and she, you know, we needed her, if she was a hundred percent down there, or needed somebody that they could float a little bit. I mean, we want teamwork, but.
Yeah.
You know, the, the police department's kind of its own, own little thing.
So does the council wanna act on this, or do you wanna, uh, refer it back to the employee relations committee?
Well.
For review or changes?
I, I, I'm fine with.
I mean, yeah, I think if we just take out five, six, and sixteen, and just add one that says, you know, assist administrative assistant or other duties as assigned, or I mean, if, if that's elections, that's elections, if that's helping with somebody's sick, or whatever, I mean.
That would leave Vicky available to do any help she needed anywhere if it was needed.
Yes.
Correct.
It's a done deal.
Yeah.
Alright, we, we can certainly make those changes, John, are you?
So, just bring it back to a future meeting, or do you just wanna?
Accepted, except.
Accepted with those changes?
With those changes.
Okay, so then the changes again are eliminate item five?
Five, six.
Six.
And sixteen.
And sixteen. And then add a paragraph just stating.
Other duties as.
Other duties as needed.
Or help with administration, with other administration as a fill-in basis.
Administration, administrative duties. Yeah, within the city, as needed.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative police assistant with the changes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by councilmember Collins, second by councilmember Batchor, to approve the job description, uh, which is, uh, administrative assistant police department with the changes that were indicated previously. Any further questions, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried.
So are we eliminating sixteen?
Nope, sixteen, you approved the job description, and now you're approving basically the reallocation of time, so, uh.
You mean sixteen on your agenda?
See, this is where I was confused at what you had there.
And now I see why, yeah. So you're, you approved a job description that's a hundred percent, uh, Vicky working in the police department, and what I have below is a request to approve reallocating her time, uh, seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent to it, to administration.
Currently at fifty-fifty.
Correct.
With the expectation that it'll change when somebody new is hired to a hundred percent, right?
Shortly thereafter.
Or, well, right, when trained, when somebody is trained in.
See, I guess I was under the impression that she's fifty-fifty, until we get the new person, then she'd be seventy-five, twenty-five.
Mm-hmm, and then somewhere down the road, a hundred percent.
Right, and then somewhere eventually, maybe, somewhere eventually, maybe a hundred percent.
Okay, this is then, uh, moving administrative assistant at the police department to seventy-five, twenty-five, from fifty-fifty, and that would be, um, Vicky Pabllo.
I would make a motion to approve, um, the move to seventy-five to twenty-five after, um, the, at, new administrative assistant, um, for the city offices has been.
Hired.
Hired.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batchor, second by councilmember Hattlestead, to approve the, um, allocation of time for, um, staff from seventy, from fifty-fifty administrat- or fifty percent of police department, fifty percent administrative, to seventy-five percent of police department, twenty-five percent administrative. At, at such point as the new part-time administrative assistant has been hired.
You got it.
Alright, took a long time though. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Alright, item seventeen, update on Mac, Matt Gos- Goswitch's proposed recycling event in Arlington.
Follow-up from our last, uh, council meeting, when, uh, Mac Goswitch was a individual who is looking for support to go ahead and conduct a Saturday recycling event. One of the benefits is that the one that we do with the county is held on a Thursday during the day, and so I think a lot of you felt that there was some benefit to having a recycling event that occurred on the weekend, in addition to which his cost is less than that of the county, and one, some of the concerns that were brought up were whether or not he had the manpower to deal with the large influx of appliances if they get dropped off at, you know, Why Not's parking lot. The other question was, uh, his original proposal was to have his recycling event prior to our county event, and so, based on your feedback, I went back to him and asked if he'd be willing to push it out a month, and also just wanted to know if he had enough manpower to deal with a lot of appli- appliances if they get dropped off. He has sent me an email here in front of you showing that, uh, he could push it out until June thirtieth. So that would be, I believe, our recycling event is in the, uh, May twenty-fourth. So.
That'd be great.
He's able to accommodate us there, and, uh, he has talked with me and told me that he does have a number of people lined up to assist. With hauling appliances back and forth, and that he will have it cleaned out by the end of the day.
Yeah, and, because Cluckles wouldn't appreciate all the junk in there.
And Tom, you had concerns last time, you're.
My concerns have all been resolved.
Perfect.
Everything's a go.
Okay.
And we know for sure that he has talked to Cluckles about this, and they have okayed it.
I didn't.
I certainly, you know, I've, I'm just hoping he doesn't say, oh, here's a spot where we could have a recycling, but he hasn't talked to anybody about it.
Well, it's not our land, and I suppose if, if, you know, it's up to Cl- to Why Not to.
I don't think we should sponsor something, though, unless it's been.
Or are we, are we sponsoring, or is that what he's asking?
Well, we're approving it.
Oh, yeah, okay. We, all right.
I, I would not, uh, ask somebody, um, the city for permission or to sponsor me if I didn't already, you know, um, cross my i's and ta- or dot my i's and cross my t's. I would, I'm under the assumption that he has talked to Why Not.
I, I would assume so, I tried to recall in our conversation, if, I don't believe the question came up. But I think the council can certainly go ahead and approve, uh, pending confirmation from me and talking with Tim, that it has been approved by them.
That's what I was thinking.
Do.
Sounds like a plan.
I'd move to go with the Goswitch plan on June thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
And. Pending that it's all right with Clucko.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Whoop.
No, no matter.
You got it?
I don't care.
I do, because I gotta write it down.
You've been trying all along today.
Say Adam.
Okay. Okay, motion by council member Shesky, second by council member Call, to, uh, approve the offer for, um. Matt Go- Goswitch to have a citywide appliance collection on June thirtieth, thirtieth, is it?
Correct.
Thirtieth, yeah.
Can I just ask for some clarification now? Does the city wish to, uh, do any advertising or marketing in terms of putting something on our website or on the Facebook page? Or, or anything in the utility billing? I, that's not what he's asking for, but certainly.
I personally would say not until after we have the one at the fairgrounds. Could be some confusion.
Maybe I wouldn't, I don't know, necessarily spend any money on it, but I mean, if we put it on the Facebook or, or a website or whatever.
Yeah, but again, not until, it shouldn't be published.
Right.
Until after the twenty-fourth.
It could also go in the newsletter or something like that, too.
We'll have a lot of confusion.
Yeah, whatever newsletter comes out after that.
Yep, okay.
Cause I think our first allegiance needs to be to working with the county, or the tri-county on the one at the fairgrounds, and it's been working fine, so. I, I however understand some people, I can't make it on a Thursday, and this would fill that, that gap. Okay, uh, motions on the table to, um, approve this. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, motion carried. Item eighteen, review requirements for recently created Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM EMT, and existing Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM paramedic position.
Why do you believe that?
This is a follow-up to our workshop, uh, uh, that happened earlier this evening. Again, you know, concern was brought to us that the, that the paramedics and EMTs are not happy with the current arrangements. Of coming to the community center and assisting with some of the cleanup, and that there are several individuals who are possibly not going to continue working because of that. So, the request was made that we reconsider our requirements.
In other words, dropping them, just going back to two bucks an hour?
That's a possibility, going back to two bucks an hour, or just not having any requirements.
But I think we heard from the, the EMTs that came, that I don't know if the, the EMTs, the, the fifteen dollar an hour job, I don't think. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's our main issue.
It's paramedics.
Right.
But, but it.
Cause I think now that they, now I think they understand that if they don't want to do the fifteen an hour, they can do the two dollar an hour, and then, you know, they have a choice, they can do either or. And I, and I just, yeah.
And, and where do we go from here?
Well, we spelt that out, and I guess the one thing that we didn't talk about is, I mean, nobody has an on-call paramedic, right? I mean, you always pay your paramedics.
Right, and it's always been at other duties as assigned, it's been in the job description forever, you know, maybe it hasn't been enforced.
Correct.
So, now it's, you know, we need to, if that's what we want to do, we need to enforce it. If we're gonna make the EMTs come up here, I mean, they can't be out here, up here without the ambulance.
Yep, then the paramedics need to be here.
Right.
Um, I'm willing to keep the, um, Monday through Friday, six A to six P EMT position open. You know, for the fifteen dollars an hour, if they choose to be and contribute to whatever comes up that, that we ask. Um, and if they would rather be at home or not, or not participate than them getting the on-call time. And then as far as the paramedics, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, they, if we assign something, they need to, uh, follow through and, and do it.
I don't think that we can do the fifteen dollar an hour deal, we can't, we can't do a deal with the EMTs.
Right.
And let the paramedics off the hook.
Right, you can't do.
Because now, how are we gonna have the EMT here?
It won't work, you have to do both, you have to do both or not.
It's not going to work. So, we're either gonna stand our ground, or we're gonna back down.
And.
Pretty much what it comes to.
You know, if we want to market it, or however, as a pilot program that we're gonna try for this year, see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and we'll have to try to fi- figure something else out, but.
So, so what are you saying, not even letting them choose if they wanna be on call to fill those daytime hours with the EMTs?
Well, that's part of the.
What do you mean?
Trial period.
That's my question.
Paramedics, yeah, I don't.
No, not paramedics, I, EMTs. I mean.
No, I mean, they, they can choose, either, the, the EMTs can choose, I guess what I'm saying is, you can't, like Tom was saying, you can't have the EMT here at fifteen dollars an hour.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And work in the community center, the garden, wherever they're working, without the paramedic, I mean.
Correct.
So, it has to be both, or no.
Or not at all.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if, if.
But what if one of them chooses to be home, I suppose the EMT, and, and the paramedic is on duty? Then, how are they gonna catch each other?
Well, there's always two people down there, because I believe, isn't, um, Kevin always on duty during the day?
Just Monday, Tuesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Oh, he's only down there three days?
Well, I, I mean, I guess if.
I mean, the, do the things need, so does, do some of the duties that we have been asking require two people? Or does it really only need one person sometimes?
I, I think, I think if one person was available, I think one person could probably do significant, significant amount of it. If it's something where they're dealing with heavy tables or something like that. I mean, we certainly have our maintenance who could, you know.
Do you have a list of duties that they could do, or, or?
Yeah, we.
Would they have the option of choosing, we need this done, pick something on there, or, or do you set, assign?
S- staff has put together a checklist of things for them to do, yes, so they can see what. And typically, what they're able to do is put together a schedule ahead of time, so that, you know, uh, an EMT or a paramedic knows, you know, coming up next week. They've got an event going on Wednesday, so I'll be over there on Tuesday, they could use us for an hour or two.
Yeah, I like that, for an hour or two, just not telling them.
Yeah.
Well, the intention was never.
Yeah.
Never for them to be careful.
They get there in the morning at six o'clock, get a call at six fifteen, and their business is all new, and I guess they're not coming at all.
Right.
But we had that understanding from the get-go.
Exactly.
That if they, the ambulance comes first, ambulance duties come first, if there is time left over.
Yeah.
Then the, it would fall into the city duties.
Correct.
And I think one has to be sympathetic with ambulance-related duties, meaning, hey, if they've been out half the night on calls, they maybe need to rest.
That, I would agree.
To, to de, yep, yeah, I.
It's not like you have to be here.
No, no.
No, but, but there has to be somebody holding them accountable to when they are just, uh, downtime.
Idle time.
That they need to, and both.
Really quiet, why don't you go up and, I don't know, pull some weed out of Flowerland?
I don't think we're gonna have them doing anything dirty, because I think they need to have that.
No, yeah. But I mean.
Presence, but, um.
Whatever the duties.
Mm-hmm.
That his staff is.
I think you hold both accountable, though, not only the EMTs, but the paramedics as well.
Yeah.
And not that they have to, you know, be joined at the hip and do the same.
Right.
Things, I mean, maybe it's one doing one thing, but in the same location.
Yeah.
Or, but, I mean, Ben does bring up a decent point, you know, if the paramedics are working by themselves, and the EMT decides to take the two hours an hour, and they're out and about, you know, do they go back? We have to, like, we need to develop a policy or something, what the process is, you know, if they have to go back to the, to the EMS building and pick up the EMT that's coming in in their five minutes, and then go, or?
Or.
Or they have to know.
But that's only two minutes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, but it takes.
Yeah, I, I understand, that's five blocks.
Right, but the, I just, just so everybody knows what the.
At the get-go.
Right, what we want them to do.
Or what potentially, yeah, well, I mean, I think that's a good, good suggestion that if there's only a paramedic on call and they're up at the community center, what's protocol?
Yep.
We're gonna meet at the, the station.
Yep.
And that should be it.
That would be the most logical.
Absolutely.
Just so, just so everybody's clear.
But no, I, I agree, because there's been some, um, communication breakdown, and that needs to be clear.
Yeah.
Black and white.
So, I'm sorry, are you saying that if, if the EMT elects to stay at home and do the two-hour, then the paramedic would still come down here, or?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's part of, part of their other duties as assigned.
Yeah.
Yep.
If they want to get paid fifteen bucks.
The other one stays.
Correct, well, they're getting paid more.
Yeah, we're twenty-five, sorry.
Cause one person can still accomplish a lot here at the police.
Absolutely, I mean, you have a lot of the duties that they can do that don't require two people.
Yeah, what about the, the paramedic that doesn't want to work up here?
Well, I mean, you know.
Well, yes, read his job description, yeah.
Yeah.
Not to be, not to play hardball, but like I said earlier, I never had a job where my boss came to me and said, you need to do this, Tom, that's beneath me.
Is that gonna be an issue?
I lost my job.
Bob, is that gonna be an issue with a, a paramedic saying, I'm not gonna go set up tables?
Uh, it's very likely, yes.
Yeah.
Um, one question we kind of talked about afterwards, you know, you know, we're having trouble getting EMTs, um, but are paramedics, I mean, is there, if we, if, I'm sure we're not advertising, but if we advertise, will we get some applications?
I, personally, I believe so, you'll have people out there that'll tell you no because of the addition, additional work requirements. But, you know, you don't know until, you know, I've had, I've brought this up to, you know, other paramedics and people, and some say yes, some say no. So, it's a crapshoot, you know, and I guess until you do it, you know, you, you're not gonna know, but, you know, um, you may not get. A lot of the more experienced medics, you know, at twenty-five dollars an hour due this, but, and right now, there is a paramedic EMT shortage nationwide, so. It's really hard to say.
So, you're thinking they might not even be receptive to, this is a trial period till the end of the year, or you, you just can't answer that?
I can't answer that, but, I mean, from my understanding of this whole thing, you know, the way it was originally explained to us, you know, both at our. One January meeting and from Pat is, this is a pilot program, you know, this, you know, is something new, this is something we're gonna, you know, try. And, you know, maybe changes either way, and that's the way, you know, I interpreted it, that, yeah, it may not go on forever, but then again, you know, it may, so, you know.
Or could be changed down the road.
It could, yeah, there could be changes down the road, you know, come January first, two thousand nineteen, you may find that, you know, like I explained this earlier, you may find that, yeah, it's, you know, it's working out, yeah, we don't really need this. You know, so you can go back to kind of the way it was, but there's still, you know, should be other duties as assigned, you know, in the, you know, fire, police, EMS side. You know, so.
It could break up your routine.
You know, or we could start getting more calls, like, that's when, one of the things that we, um, had talked about before, is if we can man and have these people that we know are gonna be on every day, Monday through Friday, we can pick. Pick up more things, it'll fund themselves, and then, I mean, then this isn't even.
Right.
Not an issue anymore.
Relevant anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but until we get there, I think, you know, as far as the citizens of the community are concerned, I mean, we want to see the biggest bang out of the buck that we're spending. And, um, if we can get a little bit of help, that will be much appreciated, and I, and, um, that's. I'm fine with the, um, requirements that were created.
Maybe, you know, you get with the manager and the, what, we got five medics, I think, that we deal with, and, you know. Get, you know, their input on that, you know.
Yeah.
The prior meeting, there was only the one medic there, um, you know, and the manager, but maybe kind of get everybody together, you know, and get their input in the, into this. You know, and maybe come up with a draft, something similar to what, you know, is on the screen now, you know, cause really, that's just addressing the EMTs. It doesn't have, you know, you're not saying anything about the medics.
Yeah, there's another one on the medics, it's pretty much the same exact thing, except it says medics.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
So, you know, but, you know, just.
Yeah, I mean, that's a.
Get, get the, get the groups together with these and say, okay, where are we at?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because if there was only one medic at the last meeting, and if, we've, we've heard that a lot of the stuff has not been transferred a hundred percent. The way we were, we were thinking, to get the other four that maybe don't quite understand what we're, we're looking for, I think that would be a big help.
We have no idea what they have for an idea whatsoever.
Yeah, no, the communication is not there.
So, I, we need an approval on this, or what?
I was gonna say, can we make a motion to put this on hold?
But, what we're looking for is we put a temporary hold, we had some, uh, um, we had some duties for them to do this last week.
Wednesday, I believe it was.
Yep, and we put those on hold so that the council could have more discussion on this issue, so, um. You know, depending on what your decision is coming out of this, if you say, we're okay with things the way they are, we can put them back on the schedule. Or if you say, we'd like to continue that hold until we have an opportunity to get together with the paramedics and the EMTs to have a discussion, we'll just hold off until that occurs.
So, are you, are you, uh, proposing that either we say we're gonna hold things, and they're just gonna go back to what they've been doing? How they want to run the program, and that by what we came up with as our job description in the first place, where we agree to what's on here, and that they start doing some things?
I, I'd like to say, try this.
Those are two options.
Try this new job description, and, and, and see how, how it goes.
I like Bob's idea of getting the groups and, uh.
Yeah, so do I, yeah.
Getting the groups together and going through this with them.
Yeah.
Not saying, this is what you're gonna do, and then having no input at all.
I don't exactly whether they, do they have pers- personally, why they don't want to do it, what they don't care about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One or two little adjustments, and they might go along with it.
Mm-hmm.
Are they here at the same time?
No.
No.
Yeah, how easy would that be to get them all?
I guess it would.
Where's the, when's the paramedic meeting?
Twenty-second, is that.
No, that's EMT.
The paramedics don't, they don't attend any of our meetings.
No, do they have the? No, do they have their own meeting?
No. That is, you know, and there you're gonna have to rely on the manager to get that together or somehow set up with, you know, the individual and say what, you know, what works best for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could, who's on ambulance?
Ben.
Oh, I am, yeah.
I mean, maybe, you know, they're all.
Raise your hand, Ben.
You know, they're, they're all here at different times, maybe we could have Pat and one of you or something, meet with them. You know, on an individual basis and go through this, you know, and explain a hundred, you know, instead of maybe meeting it as a group, if if that's not possible.
I I agree that we should be meeting with them intermittently and and um going to meetings. And I'm glad that the EMTs changed their meeting night from having it on a council night to now having it on Tuesday. So now we're able to be able to be part of that meeting, um, as, you know, the as on from the council. So I'm excited about that because to open up that communication, um, the paramedics were uh and and that EMT position is a brand new position that we created, and it was created pretty much in the, in the likeness of that paramedic position, the only difference is, is that you're an EMT instead of a paramedic. And the pay is a little bit different, so the paramedics were, they got hired on as, is the same, it's the same job description. The only difference is, is that we've, since the hospital switched over to Ridgeview, we have not had them do any kind of other than the calls, right, so that it lays on, I don't know whose shoulders as far as not following through and having them do the other duties. I would say, other duties, continue and then, yeah, let's have those communications though. Let's see what's not working for them, let's see as we move through this and implement it, see what's not working. Keep up with them communications.
Currently, they're on a hold, and what you're saying is you would like to lift that hold and.
Correct.
Have them go back to their work schedule.
Right.
Okay, wanna make that a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by council member Batra, second by council member Yashewski to lift the uh hold on their work require, on the work requirements for EMTs and paramedics?
And paramedics.
And paramed- medics. And then they would go, the effect would be that they would fill in uh and assist primarily at the community center.
As needed.
As, pardon?
As a needed?
As needed, yeah, on a as needed, as.
As availability?
As availability.
And availability, yeah.
All right, further discussion?
I don't know if you add that schedule and meeting with them or if that.
Oh, yeah, we'll follow through with that for sure, absolutely.
I think we'll find out, one is, I think we'll find out one is needed, I'm sure it isn't gonna all be better now, but.
No.
No, I, I absolutely.
We haven't changed nothing yet.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, second by the same eye.
I.
Close no, motion carried. All right, item nineteen, approve or deny authorizing attorney Mickelson to close the final, or the file on Johnson Controls?
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, chief.
I was just gonna say, I'll turn it over to uh attorney Arnison.
Attorney Mickelson, closes file?
Sure, as the council recalls, we had retained attorney Mickelson to uh see if he could get any response from Johnson Controls and he was able to, uh after some effort, uh, get a dialogue started with them again, but in the end, uh, uh, they went back to their original, original position that um, they weren't responsible and we should chase their subcontractor out in California. And um, like, uh, you know, we've had attorney Mickelson's uh opinion that that's a non-starter. Um, and so, uh, uh, his recommendation is we not initiate suit against Johnson Controls. Um, among other difficulties we've discussed in the past is, um, that type of suit isn't worthwhile unless we would get uh the cost of a complete new system from them, and that's doubtful if we were to bring suit because uh, uh, you know, after nine years in the contract, we do have somewhere around, you know, nine to fifteen streetlights that aren't currently working out of three hundred and some, and so, uh, we would have kind of uphill battle getting the court to agree that Johnson Controls should completely replace our system at this point. So, it was worth a try, but uh, I guess my recommendation is, I think we've taken it as far as we could. Uh, we had uh, uh, approved attorney Mickelson, uh, making this last effort for, I think he quoted four hundred and ninety-two dollars or something, and I did query him and he said, yeah, that covers it, he's got no further invoices. So, if we close up the file, we have no further costs on this.
Yeah.
I'd like to, uh, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve, um, authorizing uh attorney Mickelson to close the file on Johnson Controls.
Second.
Motion by council member Batra, second by council member Haddelstead to authorize attorney Arnison to advise attorney Mickelson to close the, close this file on Johnson Controls at this time. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion is carried. Item twenty, approve or deny authorizing up to fifteen thousand dollars to be spent towards one-third of the cost of a bidirectional antenna for improving eight hundred megahertz radio communications within Sibley's School.
There's been several discussions with the county, with the school district, and most recently now with uh Ridgeview about some of the communication challenges, kind of the point that we're at right now, we're um, we're compelled to, to try and do something as quick as we can, but we also recognize that if you're going to look for funding, uh, your chances of getting funding if you've already paid for something are very minimal, so. Um, obviously, the cost of an antenna is significant to the extent that's over half a million dollars. The committee has talked about working with our legislators, representative Grunhagen and Senator Newman to try and see if there isn't a way for us to obtain, obtain some funding through the state, possibly even looking to see if they would be willing to change the emergency nine-one-one fund requirements, currently you're not allowed to use that money on an antenna, but you're allowed to use it on equipment within dispatch. And it seems to make logical sense that if you can use it within dispatch, the antenna is basically an, an extension of that, it's just outside and obviously, in Arlington, we have a significant need to, to have that communication, so. Not to eliminate pursuing the full solution, which is to, to get an antenna to improve radio communications for our law enforcement in all areas. Uh, one of the big challenges is that we currently don't have communications within Sibley's School. So with that in mind, the school district, the county and the city, uh, both talked about the possibility of buying a bidirectional antenna, which would simply improve the eight hundred megahertz reception in the schools. So, uh, to that extent, uh, request is being made here to consider paying up to fifteen thousand uh towards the cost of that bidirectional antenna. Again, with the long-range plan of continuing to pursue other options and at some point, getting an antenna and providing a solution to the communication problems throughout the city.
So pretty much this is a Band-Aid for the school for next school year, because it won't get done before the school year's over. Um, and then still fight hard to try and get some monies, and at the end of the day, if we don't get monies, that's still a huge project that's out there that has to get done. So this, this fifteen is split, so, um, three ways.
Right, and has the county and the school agreed?
Yeah, the county built, uh, commissioner Pinsky was there, said he was going to take that back to the commissioner board. And superintendent Amston said that he was gonna draft something up. I believe their budget for next year starts, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, July first?
July one.
Or July, and he's gonna bring that up, the actual cost right now and the bid that was given last fall at one of these meetings was thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. They went back, we have another meeting in a couple of weeks, and they went back and they wanna just make sure that now we are in April of this year, that that thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars is still the number, so the reason for the fifteen thousand is in case they come back at thirty-six, eight, we don't have to come back and, and reapprove this.
I, it's not gonna be that much, I, um, there was another gentleman there that had bid on his building, um, which was the two twelve clinic actually in um Chaska, same size of building, I mean, it's vertical instead of laid out more, um, and he had the exact same bid for these things, so, and that was pretty recent or whatever too, so I think, uh, they're thinking that it's just a, that's how much it costs for, for a building to get these, get these units.
The narrative that's been provided with this uh topic is, it says, um, that the buy, purchasing bidirectional antenna will hopefully provide reception, is there any assurance that it will work or maybe it won't work, or how do we know before we spend up to forty, forty, forty-five thousand dollars? Is there any way that they can test?
No.
As to whether it's gonna work?
No.
There isn't.
The gentleman from Waconia Ridgeview Hospital, um, I do not remember his name. Bigger fella?
John.
Villa fella? He handles a lot of the radio stuff.
Yeah.
He said, you know, and you, now, I guess there's never a guarantee, he said that in the two twelve building, it worked perfect and he couldn't see why it wouldn't work here, you know, can we get Alpha Communications to guarantee one hundred percent? That it's gonna give us a hundred percent coverage, I doubt it. Can ask. My question might be, how long can we afford to sit, and I know it's twelve, thirteen thousand dollars each, how long can afford, can we afford to sit here? And if we have a fire at that school, or any type of emergency, an officer goes in there, officer, something happens, he can't call out?
Yeah.
I mean, we have a severe prob, a severe problem.
There's over nine hundred people in that building.
You know, is there a hundred percent guaran, no, probably not a hundred percent.
No, I think the only thing I'm saying is if we spend forty thousand dollars and it still doesn't work, then, okay, then we're.
Yeah.
Back to square one, I guess I'd ask, when you guys have that meeting with Alpha, I'd, I'd ask. I mean, you know, that, that doesn't really affect this, but I'd at least.
Yeah.
You know, ask what if this doesn't work?
What if this doesn't work?
You know, then.
I don't, I don't thi- I don't think it's, what if it, if it works or doesn't work? I think it's more into, will it work eighty percent, ninety percent, or ninety-five percent, I think that's the question.
And and Chief is here, whatever, too, he can explain maybe a little bit more about this, can't you?
I just kinda walked in, I'm not sure.
Well, eight hundred megahertz in the school.
School radio.
Outputting the pucks in the.
Right.
School.
Yeah.
Um, so when we did the walkthrough with them, they said that they, I believe it was four or five pucks down each hallway is what they were talking about, um, and then they gave that estimate of costs, I forget.
Thirty-five seven-ish.
But.
But they said that they've done it in some facilities, it's worked great, and they've done it in other facilities and it's not. So, it could be relative to the structure itself, um.
So it's finding.
The only thing that I can fall back on that each, each time we have this conversation is, you know, you made a good point there about how can we be guaranteed that it's gonna work or what percentage can they say is gonna work? Well, we can say that the school in Gaylord is made pretty much the same way this one is. Construction materialized and everything else, and their tower that they have is penetrating that school. Now, if you measure the distance from the tower to the school, I think that would give you probably the best proof of what you're gonna get when you pay for it. Um, the further away the tower gets, obviously, then we end up with, we're ran again.
Right.
But to test some of those other things would be costly.
The, the long-term plan is to still get a tower.
Right.
But, but I mean, even if we get eighty percent coverage in the school, I mean, that's a success, in my book.
Yeah.
It almost, yeah, I, uh.
What, what we have now is an issue.
So, I, I mean, it's public safety, it's safety of our, all of our volunteers and our police and and the ones that come in to help in case of something happening, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve authorizing up to fifteen thousand dollars to be spent towards one-third of the cost of a bidirectional antenna for improving eight hundred megahertz radio communications within Sibley's School.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by council member Col, second by council member Haddelstead to approve the authorizing of up to fifteen thousand dollars to be spent towards one-third of the cost of the bidirectional antenna. Any further discussion?
I just got one other comment, when we get far enough down the line, maybe we should uh involve Ridgeview, maybe they'd wanna partner?
Ridgeview's been at all our meetings.
So, well, Ridgeview's been, and they have the same issue inside their building.
Right.
Ross, I think, has the same issue inside his building.
Right, but I mean, if they put a tower on their building, maybe they'd be willing to help with some of the cost as well.
Okay, no?
Just a suggestion.
Just so you know, at all the meetings, the county's been there, the sheriff's, or one commissioner's been there. The representatives in the sheriff's department, the Arlington Police Department, Waconia Ridgeview Hospital, uh, the mayor, Michelle, and or I, uh, who'd I miss?
Uh, Roxy from the county.
Roxy Traxler from Sibley County.
Superintendent Amston?
So, we've pretty much got a group of people from every building that's involved or anybody that could maybe possibly come up with some funny, and I do know, I talked to Glenn Grunhagen last week, I know that he's been contacted. And he's a, he's a, you know, like Glenn says, I can't promise anything, I'm one state legislator.
Right.
But he's got his gals in St. Paul working out, I mean, they're, he's on it.
Okay, good.
What, what will resolve out of that, I don't know.
Right.
But Glenn won't drop the ball on this, I know that.
Okay, motion uh to be called here, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carried. Um, item was added, and that is the approve or deny entering into purchase agreement with the Streetcar Consulting LLC for conducting a housing study, cost of four thousand seven thirty-four and eighty cents.
I know it seems to be Streetcar, but it's that Streeter is actually the, the gentleman's name.
Oh. Streeter is right, I'm sorry, bifocals again.
Mister Streeter is actually a teacher at the Humphrey School of Government and uh in working with some of the students, uh, they have put together a bid for doing the housing study. Uh, Amy Newsom uh has worked uh to put together the agreement and is in recommending that uh we go ahead with uh hiring them to conduct a housing study, the cost again will be four thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty cents and the they have received a grant from Compier for two thousand five hundred to put towards that expense, so.
Towards the forty, whatever it was.
Yeah. It's about fifty fifty.
I think they do a fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, again, this, if you go back, uh, initially, the city of Arlington was considering going in on a joint housing study, there were some concerns about uh how oriented it would be towards the city of Arlington versus other things that are happening right now. And because of that, uh, we chose not to go with them and uh, we're delighted to find out that we were awarded a twenty-five hundred dollar grant to do the study uh ourselves, so we can focus it and point it in the direction that we really wanna go versus going with the group, so.
So is that his final number, the twenty-seven thirty-four eighty?
Forty-seven, forty-seven thirty-four eighty.
Thirty-four eighty, that's his final number?
Correct.
So if we take away twenty-five hundred dollars, that would be twenty-two thirty-four eighty, can I make a motion to approve? Can I make a motion to approve twenty-two thirty-four eighty?
Um.
Or not, or is it?
I wonder, does that Compier grant up, they say up to twenty-five hundred?
It's a reimbursement is what.
So that, so we paid this and we get paid back from that.
Paid back, okay, then I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the purchase, entering into a purchase agreement with Streeter, um. Consulting LLC for conducting the housing study at the cost of forty-seven three- thirty-four eighty cents.
I'll second it.
You sorta dropped off there at the end, Michelle.
Whatever this says here.
It's nine o'clock at night.
We only have an hour left.
What?
Was I supposed to bring lunch?
Motion by Councilmember Batch, a second by Councilmember Yashewski, right? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, to enter into agreement to, or purchase agreement with, uh, Streeter Consulting LLC. For conducting a housing study at a cost of four thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars eighty cents. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried. Item twenty-one, approve partial, approve or deny a partial pay estimate number four to Jewel Contracting in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars sixty-eight cents. This is for, uh, that work down the southeast corner of town. Drainage system down there.
The tile six A improvements in two thousand seventeen, project thirteen. Uh, at the last, uh, city council meeting, you approved an increase and now you're approving a partial payout. Uh, of that. So when I say partial payout, there's a certain percentage of that that is withheld until the end of the project to make sure everything is done. To our satisfaction.
And five percent is being withheld nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
It looks like, um. Bolden Mount Mink has had a chance to overlook this and make sure that it's completed as they say it's completed. So I'll make a motion to approve partial pay estimate number four to Jewel Contracting for the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batch, a second by Councilmember Cowell to approve the pay estimate number four to Jewel Contracting, the amount of seventeen thousand one ninety-two. And sixty-eight cents. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried. Okay, next is the item added, approve or deny awarding a thousand dollar forgivable loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program.
The EDA committee identified a need for childcare and, uh. In, in sending individuals to go into the childcare business and to, uh, relieve the shortage that we have. Has developed a program where they are willing to pay up to a thousand dollars towards. Whether it be license fee or supplies, different things that individuals need for preparing to start up a daycare. Uh, Jenny's Daycare is a daycare that is preparing to start up and, uh, has submitted an application and requested. Um, the funds from this program, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve awarding one thousand dollar forgivable loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program.
I'll second it, Ben. It's all yours, Ben.
I guess we found out if that was enough, huh, Tom?
Huh?
I guess we found out if that was enough?
Yep.
Yeah, we, we, um, looked on different, uh, to kinda see what it takes to start up, and that seemed to be a nice, nice, uh, number, so.
That didn't take long, that's good.
Motion by Cowell, second by Yashewski to, uh, award, or to approve, uh, awarding a thousand dollar forgivable loan to Jenny's Daycare. From the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carried.
She was telling me that.
And, uh, approve a letter to Surf- Surface Transportation Board Cynthia Brown requesting a co- comment period. Before transitioning ownership of the rail line to Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority.
Basically, uh, TCNW, uh, out of, uh, Glencoe has been in an ongoing, uh. Dispute, I guess you could call it, uh, with the Met Council making room for light rail. Uh, they have proposed several different, uh, uh. Initiatives that would impact, uh, TCNW's ability to use the rail line. And so they've been going back for, back and forth for some time trying to come to an agreeable solution. Uh, the latest thing now is that the, uh, Met Council is, uh, appealing. To, uh, the Surface Transportation Committee to go ahead and to give permission to determine what happens. To the rail line to Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority. And what TCNW is asking is that, uh, all the individuals that use that rail line. That we submit a letter asking for them to have a comment period so that we can further evaluate the impact. Uh, because there are a number of concerns, including what, uh, Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority. Uh, what expertise they have in determining, uh, the transportation line. Is there anything, Ross, that you would like to, to add to that, or are you?
Well, I, I guess my only input is what I read in the Twin Cities papers. And over the years, uh, there's been a, a lot of back and forth regarding this. Uh, uh. You know, there are all these different interests that are competing, uh, they wanna put in the light rail. If they put in the light rail in certain lines, then that shifts the, the cargo carriers over to different lines. And then the neighborhoods that the cargo carriers are gonna be pushing more trains through, don't like that idea. You know, the extra noise, et cetera, et cetera, so they go around and around and around on this issue. That's been going on for several years now, but it certainly is a significant concern for us out here. You know, if, if they, uh, squeeze our, our ability to, uh, you know, send our rail cars up through the metro area. Uh, that is gonna impact our industries out here.
Wasn't at what time it approved for the C, uh, TCW to have access of. To their lines and bring it out and somehow, uh, the Met Council or whoever kind of bullied their way in and.
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Tried to get their way just by brute force.
Typical Met Council. Over the years, they've done the same thing, that. Other issues.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we send the letter to the Surface Transportation Board and Cynthia Brown.
I'll second that.
Good.
Um, you have Kirby's email address wrong.
Kirby's email address?
That's incorrect.
Oh, it's wrong on here?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's Tony's, yeah, under Kirby's name, yeah.
Good catch.
Very good catch.
It's on both, both sides.
Both sides, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Unless he uses that one.
No, I just checked to make sure.
Kirby would probably appreciate if all this.
Yeah. Some days, I'm sure.
After this weekend.
Did I call, call the question or did I? Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I guess there's been a.
Motion, but did we vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, carried. All right, John Palman, we looked for you earlier in the meeting and you weren't here, so. Do you wanna take five minutes and explain to you what, uh, what's on your mind? No?
No.
I mean, we got your letter and the council all got copies of it, so. Ah, okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, if you had any questions on the letter, I would be more than happy to answer them, but.
I don't think so, you just know, we, we've. Not yet, cause the signs are not, but we have eliminated some of that parking. It's not quite like our house, but I guess we'll see.
Called to my attention today by one of the residents is that the lighting is so poor in that area. You know, and the events at the school at night.
Sure.
I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of people are using the sidewalks and especially now with the snow. You know, there, there are trouble where, uh, when they're walking out in the street and.
Okay.
The lighting is just so bad.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at that.
Lighting should be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I think of, yeah, if we switch.
That whole area has changed from be- being sort of a sleepy area at night to being very, you know, very alive and, and. You know, people walking here and there and activities, so, okay. No, I think some of your suggestions are, are exactly what we're doing now with eliminating some parking. I think the, the issue we have to watch, uh, during the snow season is trying to get some of that. Some more snow away from the curb, like you mentioned, around the corner, so that those streets are full width at least to what, you know, curb to curb.
And I, I, you understand that, that the buses will all come off Highway five. Up by Senix.
Mm-hmm.
And then head straight south and then head into the parking lot on that corner. That would eliminate all the, you would be going through all residential areas, all nothing. And, uh.
Mm-hmm.
I think next year too, John, that when the south end of the school is done. That's gonna pull a lot of traffic away from the north end and maybe with the help of our no parking signs when they do get up. And cleaning the snow on those intersections a little bit better, we might, we've been working on it, I can promise you that. We've been, it's, it's a topic quite often, pretty hairy, but it's, you know, we've gotta work with the school with it and everything else.
We appreciate your concern for our citizens and.
Same with the lighting, mine, that's the only reason I came.
Mm-hmm, well, thanks for, thanks for attending, John.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Uh, I know that you will be discussing more about the.
Okay.
When you talk about the lighting, are you just talking about the fact that there isn't enough lighting or are there? Are there lights that are broken and not working?
Council, Collier, you can talk through that.
It's dark, I'm trying to think, I just, I'd have to, I'd have to actually look, honestly, I don't pay any attention to it. It, it's dark, but I haven't looked at the lights, you know.
I think going east on Chandler and then making the curve, I think that whole area is pretty, pretty dark.
On that corner, but I, there should be.
Yeah.
I mean, like on, on that must be true, there's a light in front of there, but then there's not another one.
Right, yeah.
Lead to, like, where the old car.
The old car wash was, yeah, light, the big lights are just at the, yeah.
In front of your house, too. One's at the end of the block, but that's it.
Yeah.
That's how we have that football field too.
Where, where Chris has this new shop that looked all dark here, we came in. Last weekend, I think, and it was all dark.
Well, with the number of lights that are burnt out in town, that probably doesn't help with the situation either, but.
Can't get repairs.
And, well, and if you switch to LED, I mean, if you go a block away from where the new construction is.
Yeah.
It's a hundred times lighter, and I don't know if they put up more lights, I doubt it.
No, they just put up big LEDs.
So I mean, I, I think if you went to the, yeah. You know, I don't want that in my house. Meetings, didn't Kyle say they were gonna be, I don't even remember anymore, forty, up to forty percent brighter? Yeah, you can tell if you drive to like Gaylord's house. We have now are, they're at their lights, and we've been working on new lighting here.
But it's, you can see there's a light there.
Yep, and that's more than just around here, John, that's kinda all over the place, we're trying to resolve that issue.
Okay, moving along, Councilmember Committee updates, are there any?
Fire Department?
Okay.
I'll try to go quick, but there's quite a bit, um. One firefighter may not, has not completed their firefighter school, and if they don't do that by the end of the year, there will not be firefighter anymore. And it's a newer member. Um, a couple people need to do their fitness test yet, same thing with that. Uh, one was been on a long time, so if they don't do that, they don't get their bonus and they don't get. Um, so they're, they're working on getting that stuff scheduled with them. Um, the signage in front, building damage. Like that, I talked to Pat about, I guess the, the bad news is their truck is not coming.
Oh, my gosh.
At all.
At all.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, they aren't making it.
They aren't making it, so.
Were we told, that, were we told when we approved that, that the GM had to get five orders for those trucks nationwide?
Yeah.
Before they'd make any of them?
Yeah.
I don't remember being told that.
Yeah, no, that was always a thing, I don't know, maybe it wasn't brought up or not.
I don't.
I don't think it was brought up to me.
It wasn't brought up.
Yeah, but with the, on that note, you know, the guys work all over the place and they've seen that color on trucks. So something happened, you know, John, I, I don't know if he was.
Well, I went in and talked to Bruce and he said that GM had not made any of those trucks yet.
Oh, really?
Because they, they just had three orders nationwide and they weren't gonna make it until they got five.
Okay.
That's what was holding it up.
Yeah.
Well, now, they said, no, we aren't gonna make it.
Yeah, but, okay, then they li- lied to Chief Saski because they said, oh, it's here, oh, it's there, oh, it's on its way.
Yeah, they were just stalled.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, see, there was a lot, yeah, I don't know.
Cause it was here, was supposed to be, and it was, but it was there, location.
That's, I guess, something they'll have to.
So anyway, John is, uh, in the fire department, is working on getting bids to find a different truck.
From Ford? Cause that's where I'd be at.
Yes, other, other places. Other places, yes.
Really? You shouldn't have laughed so hard. But John's a Chevy guy, just saying.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I guess that's, oh, one other, no, it doesn't matter, we're good.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Police committee, all, I shouldn't say all, we've been talking about, mainly been the radios.
Yes.
Along with help for Police Department in regards to another new police officer.
Yeah.
And Vicki, which you may address this evening.
And part-timers, trying to.
Are gonna be a talk of the future.
I sent that to you. They've got a discount that ends at the end of April, so I don't know.
Um, yeah, uh, EDA, I think everything that we discussed got brought up here with the loans and, and different such things there. Um. Yeah, what else? That's it.
Okay, we've got a lot of meetings coming up this week, parks, cemetery.
The parks is on this week?
That's, yeah.
Or Monday night?
Well, we, yeah, twenty-third, whatever, whatever week that is, twenty-third.
Do we need to have another street committee meeting? Kirby approached me one day and let me know that he had to order quite a few lights. Because we got quite a few burnt out in town and he had to buy some.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we need to sit down and get a plan going here.
Probably gone for the next three weeks, so go ahead and, go ahead and convene one if you want, uh, I won't be there, so.
I'm just trying to think what we're gonna do so we can get the ball rolling there, come up with something. Because we went from, we knew we had a problem to now, maybe we got some backup lights, so they're gone. To now we're talking again and now we got lights burnt out, Kirby's gotta order them and.
Does, does he?
Continuing to get severely worse.
Sounds like committee meeting to me.
That's what I thought.
And does he have time to put them in and stuff like that, or is it something that we, that you guys should maybe discuss about? Um, potentially putting it out for bids for the install to get it done?
We talked about that on all of Main Street having, I mean, right now, that's probably not gonna happen, but we discussed that. You know, I guess the biggest thing we've been talking about is, were we gonna do it, uh, slowly? As we did, say, street projects, and slowly just started replacing them, taking those existing lamps. Holding them in reserve until we did another one so we can use them up. But that was with the general idea that those, whatever number of heads were available wherever they were. That we were going to get those, and of course, they are now gone.
Right, but as you replace a, a quarter or something, you'll have plenty of extras to hit the.
Well, until, until we did another job, we'd have, say, forty extras.
Right.
But I think what we have to do, and that's why I bring up a street, we gotta get a plan in place here. Because our problem keeps continuing to get worse, and we still have no plan.
Committee?
And it's gonna, pretty soon we're gonna have lights out.
Yeah.
So Jim's on that committee, so I'm not sure when Jim's back, huh?
Yeah, Jim should be back soon, so that'd be a time to call
Maybe Jim and I and Pat, if you would, it's okay with you.
Yeah, 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 go get it done.
And then when you get back, we can powwow after that.
That's fine, get something put together. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Hatt, Councilmember Hattles, second by Councilmember Batchard to adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-three. All in favor say aye? Pose no, motion carried.
Well, it's the latest one I've been to.
Do you?
Yeah, we gotta speed these up.
Which, which
Yeah.
Well, John, should I have some marketing?
Well, remember, in the old days, we had one meeting a month, I can remember them going until one, three.
Oh.
Oh, really? So the Kirby
Well, one a month, I could see that.
I'd say two hours, my concentration is, that's about, that's about the limit.
I'd say an hour is a good meeting.
Yeah. Germany, Austria, and
They said there was a lot of slop.
Probs.
Oh, yeah. And then I, so I called Kirby just to mention that to him, and then I said, thanks for all, but he didn't want it very detailed, did he have a
Get it out of our hands.
A rough weekend?
Yeah.
Just because of the hours, or did he get?
No, he had, uh, actually not anymore.
Carolyn called him a couple weeks ago, she said, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll be on there, you know, such, such a day.
Yeah, maybe you're gonna ask him about it.
Okay.
Part of the material was mailed to a syndicate attorney, and I've done the program, so I had a caller, Anderson, his name is Conroy, and he should be able to talk to him.
You'd think so.
So, so
Okay, well, I knew as soon as you knew something, you'd let me know, so. All right, thank you.
Really?
I'll call you in Prague.
Yeah, call me in Prague.
He's a relative of mine, so, my mother-in-law was filling me in.
Oh, really?
Oh, wow. Yikes.
For the next meeting, I'm gonna need some instructions.
I'll be back.
You'll be back for the
I'll be back for May fifth, May sixth, May seventh, May seventh, yeah, I'll be back.
That's a nice meeting.
Oh, I'm
Well, I think so, yeah, May seventh.
Yeah. I thought for sure.
But you darn well maybe are gonna be signing some stuff when they call you, they'll, you know. So, for instance, this one, I don't know if you have to rerun this or not with the right email for Kirby?
Yeah, I probably will.
And then, and then put Ben's.
Well, just tell me where to go.
Put Ben's on there because I
Have a good one, Adam, sleep well.
See ya. If you wanna get going, I can lock up when I leave. I gotta finish stamping these and
I'm gonna send a quick email to Kirby to tell, remind him that they're doing that Jetter training tomorrow, if him and Mike
Yeah.
Get in on that, actually, I'd be kind of, said, and see him how that new Jetter works.
See how it works, so.
Ben, you could come on over.
Where are they doing it?
I think they're doing it right here in the parking lot.
What time?
Ten o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
That fancy Jetter.
There you go.
Why not?
Well, if you're thirsty, we'll give you a little something to drink.
That means I have to get up sorely.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, we could, we'll come find you. I'm sure your wife will let us in the front door, right?
Well, she won't be up yet. Oh, and tomorrow's her big day.
What's her big day?
She's going to see the road rooter.
The road?
Oh, up Periscope?
Up Periscope.
Up practice scope.
Oh, what fun.
You haven't gotten to that age yet, you know.
No, I haven't, I've heard.
I've had two already, there.
Yeah, I've had a couple.
And Joyce Morium is my first nurse, Paula Tim was my second one.
See ya.
Thank you.
Are you excited?
I am not excited yet, no, I really am not. I'm sure once I get on the plane, it'll all settle in, but, ah, I just, ah, yeah. It's been a few years since I've actually taken a vacation.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Not much of a vacation guy. Wouldn't be for Roseanne, I'd probably be a hermit.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, she pushes me to do this stuff and that's, that's good.
Yeah. So she, she loves travel, huh?
Yeah, well, yeah, but boy, I tell you, she, she puts a lot of time and worry into it. She was on the phone today with travel agents, making, making sure all the transfers were there, and, oh, we didn't get this, and we didn't get that, and, oh, God.
Yeah.
So let's just go, we'll make changes on the fly.
Yeah, I agree with you. The best, the best trips I've had, you just take off and you don't have all your lodging planned out, you just kind of
Yeah.
Find places along the way, you find interesting people, and, yeah.
That's a long session.
Yeah, it was.
Were you able to eat a little something before we?
You know what, I meant to, but I, I brought it, but I didn't get to eat it. So. Best of plans.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate you guys approving the position, I
Yeah.
Think that'll be good, I Yeah, I look forward to being a little more, a little less stressed and a little less
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with the warm weather coming, I'd love to get out and meet more businesses and do more things, but all that takes time.
Yeah, it does.
So.
Hopefully you'll get some good candidates that you was from.
Yeah, I really hope so, I was trying to envision, you know, people who would maybe do something like that, or people who have kids at home, who say, you know, I don't wanna work the full-time job, I wanna, I wanna have a day to spend with the kids, or whatever, you know.
Well, it'd be nice finding someone with some experience too, though, you wouldn't wanna, you know, somebody that's
Yeah.
Computer savvy and
Yeah.
That's almost, I mean, that's almost a must now, you just
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure exactly how to how to address that issue of wages, cause you hate to have someone making more than, coming right in than someone who's been on staff.
Yeah, yeah, you don't wanna do that, that's
I know. Annie wasn't too happy with her wage, she didn't, she doesn't get an increase until July.
July, but then she gets a pretty nice increase, really.
Nine percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
There's, don't we have somebody else that's getting one mid-year?
Actually, I think a lot of people are getting it mid-year, I'm just seeing if I can find them.
And that's based on their anniversary date, or what is it, or?
It's based on kind of being a step, I Sarah will jump up in July, two bucks, nine percent.
Okay.
And he'll jump up nine percent. Mike will jump up eight percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty good.
That's pretty good, is right.
We're extremely competitive, especially
I think so.
That it's being done over four years instead of the typical ten or twelve.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. There, they're all done.
Mission accomplished already.
Didn't even miss them, missed one.
Okay.
And this is Neil's resignation, and then, and then this, which probably will need to be redone, and Ben will have to sign it, or forge my signature, I don't care.
So, does, I mean, do these usually come to the council, or is the council will hire them?
Yeah, and usually when someone resigns, that comes, that comes through, it should have been presented to you.
Okay.
And then, then brought to the council in the consent agenda.
I'm surprised that it doesn't go to Kevin as a supervisor, but I guess he's not the hiring authority, he's just the manager.
True, true, but he did bring it up last week that Neil would be
Yeah, that's right.
So it wouldn't All right, let's see, and then that's done, I initial that.
This is, so these are, this is the, the green, okay, no, this is time card.
This is all checks.
Okay, checks, okay.
All the checks that she had ready for me.
Okay, did, was there something with the Green Isle City ambulance fee that she had you sign, or maybe not?
Oh, 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 please, I gotta do this. Thank you.
You bet.
I just grabbed them off the floor, yeah, those are, they've got those bright yellow stickers on for a reason. Oh, boy, yeah, and these are, there's quite a few of these babies. Like you say, if you wanna hit the road, uh
Yeah, yeah, no, I
I will close up.
I was up late last night, my dad went in and was admitted again to the hospital for it's just, boom, he's in and then he's out, and then he's back in, and
Yeah, what's, what issues is he having? Is he having a congestive heart failure yet, or he has fluid building up in his lungs?
He's, well, he's been having a lot of issues with his catheter.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so they ended up having to go in and do a surgery, and they were worried, you know, at age eighty-nine.
Right.
Didn't know if he, how he would come out. So, he came out okay, so, but, yeah, his big issue is that
The old prostate is oversized, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Issues with that, and it seems like he's retaining all kinds of water, and
Oh, yeah.
So he's on different medications, he's trying to do different medications to bring down that water.